Okay, it being six o'clock, I will call to order the November 10th meeting of the planning board here at Whitcomb Hall, and I'll begin with the role call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here. Michael York.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Michael Day.
Recording in progress.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Richard Lane.
Here.
Sluckman's rep Ken Colby.
Here.
Steve Malone alternate.
Here.
And Brian Vertigo alternate. I will seek Steve for Michael Day. And go over the agenda. The agenda this evening is applications and public hearings. We have the planning board number 22-020 at the site plan modification. Bob Furlong requests a modification to the approved site plan for airport storage to add two additional storage structures to the existing self-storage facility at 251 Old Homestead Highway. Subject property is shown as tax map 36 lot 5 and is located in the business district. Item B, planning board number 22-021, site plan review. Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Avenrue Development Group, LTD, requests a site plan review for an age-restricted 76-unit multifamily development and associated site improvements on land owned by Paul Thomas located at 115 Old Homestead Highway. Item C, planning board number 22-022, that's a site plan review and condominium subdivision, and that's Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Altech Contractors LLC, requests a site plan review and condominium subdivision for a 32-unit residential condominium development for property situated off Old Homestead Highway and shown at tax map 36 lot 1-2. Subject property is located in the business district. And then discussions and other business, we have woo-doggie relocation of a food truck, zoning ordinance amendments for 2023 discussion, rules of procedure, those are our rules of procedure, amendments to those site plan review regulations, and any other business as may be required. So going to the top of the list, we will need a regional impact. Let's see if anything on tonight's agenda impacts the region as a whole and requires us to notify other surrounding towns.
I move that there's nothing on tonight's agenda that would require a regional impact statement.
On second. Okay, motion by Michael York that we don't need a regional impact, and second by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, next up would be the planning department's new personnel, and he's sitting way over there in the corner there, his name is Julius Peel, and he's a planning and zoning coordinator, and he's to help assist the planning board and the land use departments with various jobs, I would say. Okay, second, the minutes of October 27th, we need to take a look at those, see if anyone has any, anything to say about them. If not, the motion to approve as presented is in order.
Make a motion, I accept them as printed.
Okay, a motion by Richard Lane to accept the minutes of October 27th as presented is our second.
On second.
Second by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Understand.
And one abstention, and the minutes are approved. Now we get to applications, public hearings. Before we do that, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that at nine o'clock we cease and move all remaining agenda to the next scheduled meeting.
Okay, a motion by Michael York that when nine o'clock comes, we just, anything we haven't gotten to is postponed or table till the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve Malone, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now on to the first application, and that is the site plan modification. Bob Furlong requests a modification to the approved site plan for airport self-storage to add two additional storage structures to the existing self-storage facility at 251 Old Homestead Highway. Subject property is shown as tax map 36 lot 5 and is located in the business district. And we have the plans in front of us here. Mr. Furlong, if you'd like to use the microphone for, it's for the people listening on Zoom, just press that small button in front of it, and it puts the green light on, and it will be on. There you are.
My name's Bob Furlong, and representing Furlong LLC, as you said, we're looking to add two more buildings down there, two small buildings totaling 1,650 square feet. One would be 40 by 15, the other would be 70 by 15, consisting of 22 5 by 15 units. The drainage has been addressed on the plan, we've got some infiltration stone in the back, and all of that water heads to the drainage that currently exists on site. We have storm drainage already in place that goes to the retention ponds. Traffic, based on our history and known history of sources, we're estimating one additional car per day as a result of these two new buildings. We'd be doing a little bit of paving, we're going to build these right outside of the existing fence line, and we're going to pave just enough to create drainage so that the water doesn't go into the building, and it will have a little swell out in front of the building. Buildings will be identical to what is there in appearance. There's no landscaping plan, as the back of this is an exit from Power's Generator and TruNord Networks. Fencing will just be modified to accommodate the new buildings, and there's no additional site lighting, as we have adequate site lighting in place. That's about it.
Yeah, looks pretty straightforward. I did have a question, what's that space between the two buildings for?
Well, we do want to try to meld the two buildings together, because that gets a little funky in the shape of them, but we're probably also going to use that to take a little bit of drainage to the backside of the building. Because of the way the existing grade goes right now, we're going to be able to take the upper building, the small building, we'll be able to take some of that water and sort it in between the buildings and let it run out the back, and then the water from the larger building will go all the way down, and that it will go out to the drainage well.
Is that the way it sheeded before? Did it sheet across here, right to the side? That's how you had it?
It sheets down this way, and...
And that way?
It's west and north.
Okay. And now, it will sheet the same way, but it's prevented from going into these buildings here by what, the paving? It's going to be raised up there? I'm talking about if it sheets that way, it's open to those buildings, prevented from going to those buildings?
That's why, that's the small amount of paving we're going to do.
Oh, right there.
I cut it out from the existing fence line, so we're going to be able to do the new construction without taking the fence down, and then when we finally do take it down, we'll have probably, in the back, probably five or six feet where we'll bring it backed up to the building.
Fantastic. So that'll go up. Are there any questions from the board members?
Are you going to have those buildings sloping away from the existing buildings?
Oh yeah, there'll be a shed roof that pitches north, down to the north, so away from the asphalt. This roof will pitch down here.
It is? I think so.
It's to the south. It pitches down to the south, yes. Okay, and you have what to catch? That existing ground surface, but it's going to be stolen infiltration right here, it's going to pick it all up, and the whole site is the same.
Any other questions from the board members? Any questions from the general public on this site plan? Anyone on Zoom questioning this? No questions on Zoom? I guess they're way over there, so. If not, then I will close the public hearing, which I had forgotten to open in the first place, but it's closed now, so. And take deliberation from the board. Looks pretty straightforward. We've seen this property before, I think everyone is familiar where it is, down by the airport there. And it's about the only spot it has left, I think, to put in those buildings anyway. So if nothing else, then a motion would be in order.
I move that we approve it.
A motion by Michael York to approve the site plan modification, is there a second? Seconded by Jane Johnson, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and you have the verification. Thank you very much, thank you.
And excuse me. I'm, I will be recording, I'm a stenographer, the second part of this agenda item B. Between the echo in the room and shuffling papers, it was very hard to hear on my end, so I just ask kindly that for this next section, everyone speaking, please speak into the microphones as much as possible.
Okay, we will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. She's a stenographer, and she is taking down the minutes for that part of it, and she wanted everyone to make sure they spoke into the microphones because of the echo coming over Zoom, she couldn't hear it very well. Next item up would be planning board number 22-021, and this is a site plan review. Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Avenrue Development Corporation Group, rather, LTD, requests a site plan review for an age-restricted 76-unit multifamily development and associated site improvements on land owned by Paul Thomas located at 115 Old Homestead Highway. The subject property is shown at tax map 37 lot 7 and is located in the business district. Upon finding that the application meets the submission requirements of the site plan review regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete, and a public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for a time and date certain. So the first order of business is to see if the application is complete, and we will hand the presentation. Whenever you're ready to make your presentation on this one.
I'm sure exactly the format, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to sit at that table with the microphone, or sit at that table?
See, I guess, use a microphone intended, because you can't hear the over Zoom if you're not through the echo, so you can hold the microphone, and then, so the first part is just the thickness of it, so you can just go over the checklist, and just point out everything that's required on the checklist that is on the document, okay? And you can hear me. It's not a problem, yeah, we have to accept this. I may forget. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Chad Brandon. I guess I need to grab my microphone. How's that? Good evening again, everybody. For the record, my name is Chad Brandon, I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and I'll be representing Avenrue Development, or Avenrue Development Group, LTD, this evening, and Paul Thomas, who's the owner of the property. Mr. Chairman, we'll go through the checklist items, and then I'll get into a formal presentation after that, if that makes sense. That makes sense, you go through the checklist items, and then the application will be considered as complete, and then we'll go over all that, and open the public hearing, and then that's the end of the presentation. Okay, very good.
I apologize, I cannot hear whomever, the chairman, I'm sorry. You'll need to speak in the mic.
Sorry, I didn't have a mic on. I shut it off when there was feedback before, sorry about that.
Quite all right.
Okay, do you want me to repeat what I just said?
Yes, please, I heard none.
Okay, I was telling Mr. Brandon that he can make his presentation, we'll go over the checklist as to the items that are required on the planning board, I mean, on the site plan, and then the board will decide whether the application is complete, and if it is, the board will vote on it as complete, and then the public hearing will be open, and he can make a presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Brandon, whenever you're ready. Okay, I'm taking a look at the checklist that we submitted with the application, you can see we went through and marked off all 25 of the items included within the checklist. So starting with number one, name, address of owner, we certainly have that on the... Would you just point them out on the site plan for, you know, everyone to see? That's a copy of the site plan. It's just almost impossible to hold this mic and... Oh yeah, and do that, okay. Yeah, that would be great. It makes noise when you, when you move. I hear that, that's right. Well, this is our first time, by the way, we've never used a microphone before, so it's going to be a learning curve. So taking a look at the plans that we submitted with the application, you can see we went through and marked off all 25 of the items included within the checklist. So starting with number one, name, address of owner, we certainly have that on the... Would you just point them out on the site plan for, you know, everyone to see? That's a copy of the site plan. It's just almost impossible to hold this mic and... Oh yeah, and do that, okay. Yeah, that would be great. It makes noise when you, when you move. I hear that, that's right. Well, this is our first time, by the way, we've never used a microphone before, so it's going to be a learning curve. So taking a look at the plans that we have in front of you, on the cover sheet, you will see that we have the name and address of the owner here at the bottom of the page. The tax map and lot number is also detailed on the cover sheet as well. The north arrow written in graphic is detailed throughout the plan set in a number of locations. The name and address of the plat- preparer would likely be our company throughout the plan set, you can see on the cover sheet, it's centrally located at the bottom of the Vicinity sketch, you can see the primary picture on the cover sheet is actually a vicinity sketch, so we've certainly addressed that. Name, addresses of all abutting landowners, that is typically detailed within the plan set, on the existing conditions plan, which is sheet three of 15. So you have an abutters, list of abutters right here, centrally located. Physical features and uses of land within 200 feet of the site, we certainly have that detailed within the plans, it's actually on the, on the cover sheet as well with that aerial photo. Perimeter boundary lines in lot area and square feet and acres, that's clearly depicted on the existing conditions sheet, this is the label here. Shape, size, and height, location of existing structures on site, we only have one existing structure, it's located here, you have the size and location that's shown on the plans. Identification of access from the site to public streets, site distances from the access points, curb cuts, and proposed changes, if any, to existing streets, that is detailed throughout the plan set. We do have, there's an existing curb cut located here on the proposed plans. The site plan details two proposed curb cuts, one on the northeast side, and one on the southeast side of the site. Both of those curb cuts have adequate site distance, and we have secured DOT permits for those locations. That was done during the zoning board approval process, so they do need to be updated, but certainly safe site distance is satisfied, otherwise we would have, we would not have been able to secure that permit. Location and number of parking and loading spaces, the site plan does detail all the proposed parking for the application, you can see that with all the associated numbers throughout, we do have a zoning summary table which also calls out the parking calculation and what we're proposing, located centrally and on the bottom of our site plan sheet. Landscaping plan, that is included in the plan set, I don't know if you want me to flip to that, or it, but it's... We'll take your word for it. Location, type of natural features existing on the property, and existing and proposed lighting, that is all detailed within the plan set, we have a detailed lighting plan with spec sheets of all of those parameters. Natural features such as water bodies, ledge outproppings, wetlands, we do not have any water bodies, ledge, or wetlands located on site, but we have shown on the cover sheet that Wilson Pond is located across the street into the east of the site. Existing and proposed grades and topographic contours at five-foot intervals, we actually show them at two-foot intervals on this site so that we can adequately design and ensure that there will be no ponding or issues with stormwater with this project, so we more than satisfy that requirement. Number 17, size and accurate location of existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, fire ponds, all of that is detailed on the plans, we have a utility plan located within the plan set. The utilities, a long time ago, many years ago now, were actually stubbed out of the right-of-way and are located on-site, we did that quite a few years back for the landowner, Mr. Thomas, and then, so this project essentially ties into all of those stubs, utilizing that work that was done, and the reason why that was done a little while back is DOT puts a five-year moratorium on their roads when they pave it, and so we were trying to get those utilities stubbed out, anticipating some development on this property within a five-year period, I think that five-year period is now up, so, but nonetheless, the works, that work is done, and luckily, we have, we have good connections for those utilities. Means of providing water supply, we're tying into municipal water with this proposal. Surface drainage patterns, we have a detailed stormwater management plan report that was submitted with the application, which clearly depicts watershed areas, drainage flow areas, both the precondition and postcondition comparisons, and we have a detailed grading plan that, that really calls out where all the stormwater is going, and we look forward to talking about that in some additional detail as we move forward with the presentation. Copy of certification by a licensed septic designer that the existing system is sufficient for existing and proposed use, and that's not applicable, which is why we have that stated as such, because we're tying into municipal sewer, and that would be required if we were doing on-site septic design. Location and type of proposed sewage disposal systems, we checked that off as completed because we showed a design tying into the municipal sewer system, so we have satisfactorily addressed that comment. Location of existing and proposed on-site wells showing a 75-foot radius, there are none, so that would be not applicable. Soil survey data from Cheshire County Soil Survey, that is detailed on the existing conditions plan with an appropriate legend, so that's been checked off as complete. Location of any existing and proposed easements, deed restrictions, and/or covenants, and we checked that off as completed because there are none, and that's been, I believe, notated as such. And architectural plans, we have provided those with our submission, I believe it's a three-sheet set, and we did have the opportunity to work with staff on addressing some comments that were raised in the staff memo that we received late last week, and so we have come this evening with three sets of revised plans that was requested by staff, and so we're happy to move forward once the board hopefully deems this application complete. Okay, thank you. So, members of the board, do we have a complete application? Do they leave anything out? If not, then a motion that the application is complete would be in order.
I'll make a motion that the application is complete.
Motion by Brandon Self that the application is complete, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the application is complete, and with that being complete, I will open up the public hearing and hand it once again over to Mr. Brandon to make a presentation. Sure, so I'm going to start over with the presentation a little bit, because I do want to introduce the team that we have here this evening. With me tonight is Jack Franks, who is the applicant and owner of Avenrue Development Group, LTD. Also with us this evening is Tim Sampson, who is the project architect, and joining us via Zoom is JP Harris and Susan Manchester, who are our project attorneys. Together, we certainly hope that we can answer any questions that the board and public would have this evening with this application, put a great deal of work and effort into trying to present a thorough and complete plan, and we do believe that the plan that we have before you this evening meets all local and state design criteria. So tonight, we're before you seeking a site plan approval for a 76-unit age-restricted, meaning 62 and older, residential development over tax map parcel 37-7. The subject property consists of approximately 2.5 acres of land, and has approximately 166 linear feet of roadway frontage along Old Homestead, excuse me, yeah, Old Homestead Highway, also known as New Hampshire Route 32. The property is situated on the west side of the highway, and has a physical address of 115 Old Homestead Highway. Zoning for this property and zoning in this area of town is business district, and a multifamily residential use in that district is permitted only by special exception. Just going to touch this computer. We'll work out the bugs along the way, I guess. So the ZBA approved a special exception for this project back on September 19th of 2022, this year, so we are, we are compliant from a use standpoint, and so we're really here this evening to address all, address all the technical elements of this design. The existing conditions of the property, as depicted on our existing conditions plan, show that the site is currently occupied by a single-family dwelling with associated improvements such as a driveway, walkway, utility connections, et cetera. The remainder of the property is primarily open field, and the topography on site generally slopes from the highway, from Old Homestead Highway, to the west towards the airport in the back, which is Keans-Dillon-Hopkins Airport. The property is bounded by the airport along the south and west boundary. The, to the north of the site is a place of worship, and then to the east of the property is residential properties in Wilson Pond. This proposed 76-unit age-restricted affordable housing development that we have before you this evening, again, we believe meets all of the local and state design criteria, the development does propose to raise all of the existing improvements in order to prepare the site for redevelopment, and frankly, a significant investment in the community, really to, which will address an acute housing need that we have in this area. The proposed building footprint for this project will... The proposed building footprint for this project will consist of approximately seventeen-thousand-five-hundred square feet. That is depicted clearly on the site plan, which we have on the screen and plan in front of you right now. This building has been positioned to meet all setbacks and also has been positioned to meet all FAA criteria. Basically, we've, we've located and designed the building and the associated grading so that we meet all the glide slope criteria, and we have appropriate clearance from the glide slope to the top of, of the building. That is also detailed on the plan, on some of the notations and grading. The building as designed would have a maximum height of, I believe, forty-three and a half feet, which falls under the forty-five-foot maximum height requirement in town. The east and west wings of the building, as depicted on the plans, will be a hundred-and-eighteen feet in width and fifty-six feet in depth. So you can see as it parallels Old Homestead Highway here, we're a hundred-and-eighteen feet, and then fifty-six feet in depth here. And again, that's the east and west wings. And then the central portion of the building is fifty-six feet wide by sixty-four feet deep, and, and those three pods, if you will, are connected by a fifteen-foot corridor that comprises of the seventeen-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot footprint. The building would be, again, four stories in height and would provide sixty-eight one-bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units. Access to the site would be provided by two one-way curb cuts onto the state highway. Traffic would enter the site on the northeast entrance. Do I, am I breaking out of the, or can everybody hear me fine? It feels like when I turn, I just wanna make sure it's catching.
Oh, just your mouth is trying to come out.
So access from the site will, the main entrance will be on the northeast section, and it'll have a one-directional traffic flow going around the west side of the building, and then ultimately heading along the southern side back and exiting the property on the southeast corner. You can see as you enter the property, we will have a bay of parking here and as well as an entryway. There's seven spots here. And then the primary area for parking will be situated out behind the building. We also do have a parking bay located along the front, and there is an entry into the building along this east side as well. The site design lays out a hundred-and-eighteen parking spaces, but we are requesting a reduction to ninety-four spaces. This twenty percent reduction is allowed within your site plan regulations, and the, there was a study done, I think was prepared or presented to the, to the town a little while back, I'm just gonna grab it. There was a study done for affordable renting housing developments. It was prepared by BCM Planning LLC, and it's, essentially analyzes the characteristics of low-income housing projects. And what that study proved or provided was a summary in parking needs. And ultimately, that study shows that each unit only requires point-eight parking spaces. So generally speaking, you know, a parking calculation for a development like this, a sixty-two and older development, would only require point-eight parking spaces per unit. That would yield a parking calc less than seventy-six. So if we just assumed it was one space per unit, it would be seventy-six. We're proposing to construct ninety-four with this project, but we've showed on the plan and in the design that we can definitely support the hundred-and-eighteen. We just think when you consider good planning practices, and frankly, some of the feedback that we've received from the public in, in form of a, a letter, and then from the Conservation Commission, there's been, there's been comments expressing the interest in reducing impervious cover, trying to be sensitive to stormwater runoff. And so what we're suggesting is that we build ninety-four spaces. It would still be compliant with the regulations as long as we get the twenty percent reduction, but it would be a good environmentally friendly design where we'd be reducing the footprint of impervious cover. I mean, that's really it in a, you know, in a, in a short summary, and we can, I'll speak in more details to what we're proposing for stormwater here in a minute. Other site improvements for this project that we have included with the submission package and within the plan set consist of walkways, landscaping, lighting, drainage, and utility connection and design infrastructure. This project will be serviced by municipal sewer and water, which I, I mentioned earlier in the checklist review. If we take a quick look at the the connection to the sewer will tie into an existing stub located in this northeast corner, and will extend the sewer line to a manhole located along the north side of the proposed building, and then we'll have a service line that comes out and ties into that, that manhole. The sewer connection for the plans that we have before you this evening has actually been revised to address some feedback from the sewer commissioners, so we've addressed all of their comments with, with that revision. The initial plan that we submitted had three sewer services coming out of the north side of the building, and essentially what the sewer commissioners wanted was a manhole at the intersection of each one of those three service line, lines. We had an opportunity to review that with, with the applicant and ultimately decided that we tie them together in the building and come out with, with one connection, and we would tie that into a manhole as requested by the, the sewer commissioners. The water design for this project comes in on the southern side of the site. Again, we tie into existing stub here. We run the water line all the way down actually the southern portion of the project, and we terminate out and back to a hydrant. That has been reviewed with the fire department. We've actually made a couple modifications to the plans that we had before you this evening for the fire department to address their review. They had some concerns relative to ensuring that their apparatus could appropriately drive through the site, so we did prepare a, a template for them, and we also enlarged a couple radiuses at the entrance, this southern entrance to address their concerns, and we modified the curbing along this southern side to be a Cape Cod burn, which is, which is a more gradual transition. So if for some reason they happen to drive onto that, it wouldn't damage any tires or anything like that. But the width of the access and the template exercise proved that the design as, that we had before you was plenty adequate to handle emergency access vehicles, and I think as such, the fire department is, is fine with this proposal that we have. Electric and communications will, will also tie in on the southern side. We have that proposed here. There'll be a transformer located centrally here, and that'll tie into the building. We do have propane tanks also proposed on this southern side, kind of in this corridor area, and that would tie in in, in two locations into the mechanical rooms of the buildings Taking a look at the stormwater design for the site. We did obviously receive some comments from the Conservation Commission. We've, we certainly are prepared this evening to answer any of those concerns or questions, and hopefully we'll answer some of them in the presentation. The stormwater for this site is, is really pretty straightforward. We're capturing all the runoff from the site. So the entrance, the entrances into the site drain in. Entrances drain in. We've, we've created a high point at the main entrance on the east side, and it, the stormwater will pitch in both directions and come down both sides of the building. We have catch basins proposed in a number of locations to take that surface water, bring it down into pipes, and ultimately convey that runoff all the way back and ultimately into this large infiltration chamber system that we're proposing below the parking area. That chamber system is designed to meet alteration of terrain standards, and Hampshire Department Environmental Services will be reviewing and approving this project. So the stormwater management components of this design have been designed to meet all of their standards. We are proposing oil-water separators in a few of the catch basins, which is a responsible management practice when you're collecting stormwater from a parking area. We're also proposing within this system an isolator row, which is essentially a row where you're, you get additional treatment of runoff, and then from there, it goes into adjacent chambers where you ultimately have infiltration going, subdrain. This system is designed and has to be a minimum of three feet above seasonal high water table, so it's designed appropriately to meet those standards. And we've done other systems just like this in town. In fact, one just got installed in front of the self-storage facility across from the Cheshire Fairgrounds. And that project like this one requires the alteration of terrain review and approval. So how are we capturing all the stormwater? Well, we have those, we have those basins located throughout the paved areas, but we also have curbing located along the perimeter of the parking areas in the locations where we're directing stormwater, ensuring that we're, you know, stopping that runoff and, and conveying it to those drainage structures, to the oil-water separators, and ultimately to that infiltration system. So what does that mean for the stormwater runoff? It, you know, the, the charge for any development is to match existing conditions. So the stormwater management report that we prepared and submitted shows that the, it shows the existing conditions, what's the existing runoff from the property, that establishes a baseline. And then we have to design a system that meets or reduces the runoff off-site from that drainage point. And this design does just that. And I'm happy to go into, you know, as much details as, as, as the board would like in that regard, but that's kind of an overall summary of stormwater for this project.
I just have a question on, since you're on stormwater there, right there.
Yep.
You know, just looking over the plans, you've got everything going into, it looks like manhole number one, drain manhole number one, right?
Yeah.
Back there, and it's on, it's on the backside or the west side of your infiltration system.
Yep.
So, and it looks like a T's there and goes to a, a swale, maybe down further in the field, it goes to HW two?
That's correct.
So how does that work? Why, what's preventing it to go from the water from going all the way to that swell or does it instead of into the infiltration system?
No, that's a great question. So this drainage manhole is detailed in the plan set, and I, I'd be happy to show it to you, but the, the pipe that goes to head wall two is elevated in the structure, about five feet. So what, what that means is the, the water in the system would have to surcharge up to five feet in order to go out the, that outflow. We're not seeing flows go through that pipe, but as an engineer designing for, you know, design storms or back-to-back storms, we always try to design these systems to have a positive outflow if needed.
It's a relief valve.
It's a, it's essentially a relief valve. But, but the pipe is elevated within the structure so that it directs all the flow into this infiltration system, and then, you know, in a, in a instant that we, you know, have an issue or, or something, a very, very large storm, you know, you may get a little bit of runoff through that pipe, but it's not showing as such in the report. And we design, you know, the stormwater management report that we submitted, just so you, you know, designs through the fifty-year storm, when we submit for the alteration of train permit, they've just started doing this. They, they have us submit a, a design for the hundred-year storm, and we have run that here, and it, you know, and it's designed, you know, appropriately. When we made, when we made the submission to the town, typically what happens is we make a, a submission to a town, and then we continue working on the project and pull together the alteration of terrain permit as well. So this system will be designed to function through the hundred-year storm.
Okay, so that, that's why you have all the storm drains going beyond that infiltration system to the back of it, rather than coming in the front of it, just so they can add that relief valve in case something happens, it'll go the other way.
Well, not, not exactly. I mean, I can explain it in a little more detail. The lowest portion of the site is down here, so we're gonna need drainage structures down here anyways to capture the runoff. If we put another set of drainage structures up here, every structure we add adds cost to the project, a lot of cost, especially now, I mean, pipe and drainage structures are absolutely insane how expensive they are. All of the stormwater has to be run through the isolator row, which is the center row of that system. So you have to control the runoff. So we couldn't put a structure at the corner, 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 corner. We have to go down the middle. But in order to provide a fiscally responsible design, we run everything down to the bottom and connect in this way.
Is that basically level, then, that infiltration system?
Absolutely. Hundred percent level. Yep.
What are we doing with snow, snow removal? Where is that going to be stacked?
Let him, let him get through the presentation. I mean, we're on drainage now, let him.
Well, it's included, you know, the drainage is gonna be affected if there's, if they're putting it on top of manhole covers.
Okay, well, yes, he wants to answer. You're right.
Yeah, I have no problem answering it. So the snow, we've, we've designed a panel on the backside of the parking area here for snow storage, and that panel has been designed to drain, it's tilted back to the parking area, so any snowmilk would ultimately come, come down and land, you know, in the, in the, in the infiltration basin. But there's, there's plenty of room on this site to accommodate snow storage, but it is definitely part of the design. So we will not be piling snow on top of drainage structures.
You said that slopes towards, I'm just looking at the contours there. You said, so the land slopes slightly towards that.
Yeah, you, you need to look at the spot grades. So there's, see where it's like a tenth tire, four-eighty-seven-point-nine versus four-eighty-seven-point-eight right in the center? It shows that that's sloping down.
Bring different ones there. Okay, I'll see your four-eighty-seven-point-nine right there, parking lot there. That's four-eighty-four to forty-seven. Okay, right, four-eighty-four, about where that.
That manhole is, okay, thank you. So two-foot contours don't always, I mean, you can't always detail everything with contours, so that's why we include those spot grades to show what the design intent is. Yeah. Taking a look further into the design plans, again, here, this is the utility plan. We've kind of gone over everything there. This is the site landscaping plan. So what we've done, our first submission of this project showed double-step parking along the, the east side. And we were, we, we believed that that met the regulation for landscaping because it's not, landscaping standard doesn't say specifically that it has to be from the right-of-way line, it just says landscaping from the road, the public road. So we were counting the space from the edge of pavement, but after talking with staff, we ultimately did make a change here. We got, we, we got rid of the, the parking row closest to the highway and essentially converted that all to landscaping. So we now have the appropriate twenty-foot landscaping area. It's actually about twenty-four feet on our property, meeting that requirement. We also enlarged this landscaping along the building here, along the east side to be ten feet in width, which addresses one of the other landscape criterias. And then within the plans that we have submitted, you can see down here, we have a number of notes that really just spells out the landscaping calculations and how we're meeting them all. We do have some islands located. We do have some islands located within the parking area in the back. We have appropriate number of trees within the islands. They've been positioned appropriately to also account for the site lighting design. You can't have a tree and a light right next to each other, so we have, you know, positioned them accordingly. We do have some landscaping along the backside of the building here, and then we have landscaping in the corridor areas as well. We believe the site as designed does meet the landscaping requirements and we're happy to speak to that in more detail if needed. The site lighting for the project has been designed to meet all local requirements. The lights will be entirely full cutoff, Downcast, Night Sky compliant, LED fixtures. We did shorten the light poles in the back of the site from the original submission because we had a little bit of, you saw by the point-by-point, we had a little bit of lumens extending close in one instance, a little bit over the property line to the north, excuse me, to the south. And so what we did is we took the height of the poles, we went from 20 feet to 18, and that solved that problem. So we're completely compliant with those standards. This site will provide lighting through a combination of pole-mounted lights, like the ones we have in the back parking area, and it's along the outside of the buildings, providing ample lighting for all of the parking areas accordingly. One of the other, you know, kind of hot dumpster in this location here, trying to make it as accessible for the future tenants as possible. I say that because with 62 and older projects, a lot of people think, well, why don't we put the dumpster all the way to the back of the site, back here? Well, we try to make it, you know, easily accessible, given the demographics that, you know, we're servicing. So that's been located here. Certainly ample room for, you know, a truck to get in to maintain that. And that, again, will be fully enclosed as required. This project will require a number of state permits. We'll have to update the DOT permit for the access. We will also need to get a state shoreline permit, just want to touch on that real quick. We have, this is actually a plan, it shows Wilson Pond here. In order to determine the shoreline setback for the project, we had to locate, you have to show a setback from Wilson Pond. So we show that on the plan here, right along the front of the property is the 250-foot shoreline setback. What does that mean? Well, it means that you need to go to the state and get a permit. Luckily, we're not in the 150 or the 50-foot ex, which are stringent for land development. The 250-foot zone really just has requirements for pesticide use and stuff like that. The reality here is all the stormwater from this project drains internally. So even though we're in the shoreline zone, the stormwater drains away from the protected water body. Still have to get a permit, so we'll be submitting to the shoreline bureau, shoreline permit bureau. And we often have to submit to them for securing permits. So this project has been designed to meet all of their criteria. They're certainly going to be happy that we're collecting all the stormwater, treating it, and then infiltrating it into the ground. Because we're in that shoreline protection zone, we have to go for an alteration of terrain permit as well. What I mean by that is this project disturbs less than 100,000 square feet of area, but when you're in the shoreline protection zone, that threshold drops to 50,000 square feet. So we will be going for an alteration of terrain permit for this project, which I've stated earlier. And because of that, you know, the stormwater elements of this project have been designed to their standards, which do exceed the local requirements. We will also need to get an FAA permit, just because anytime you're constructing buildings within this proximity of the airport, you do have to file for some approvals through FAA. And we've done that on a number of projects in this vicinity. We have located the runway within the airport so that we could accurately depict the glide slope from the runway and design the building accordingly. We have to certify that, and so all that work has been done and we have the plans that we have before you meet all of those criteria. With this submission, we did submit architectural plans as well, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have relative to these plans. I am not going to do that. I will be handing that over to a project architect when the time is right. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's an appropriate time to try to answer any questions that the board may have.
It is, yes, it is. Any questions that the board members have for the presentation here? Steve, you have a question?
Um, I was saying, senior citizen project. Are there income restrictions on the tenancy?
I would, I don't know if you want to answer that, Jack?
Sure. Jack Franks, Avenue Development Group.
You might have to just sit at the mic and turn that on, please.
Jack Franks, Avenue Development Group. This is an age-restricted affordable housing development where the development will be at 60% area median income and below.
Okay, do you know what that income would be?
Based on the Cheshire County area median income, and that fluctuates.
Okay, at this point in time, you know what it would be?
Well, if we used $80,000 as the area median income, it would be 60% of that or below.
Okay. 60% dollars?
Of the area median income, and it's based on each county.
And to be clear, that 60% of that would go to rent? Is that what you're saying?
No, the way it generally works is that you have to qualify first, and there's an income band. And generally speaking, the rule of thumb is the tenants need to have 30% of the income they have available go towards the rent. So there's a income band of 60% AMI area median income or below, and then they have to qualify to be able to pay the rents that are being charged there. And generally speaking, it's no more than 30% of their total income.
Is this a HUD or state subsidized project at all?
It is not.
Okay, thank you. I do have some more questions.
How about it? Go ahead.
You were talking about the garbage collection area, and you pointed out one area for garbage. Is that the only one that will exist on the property?
That is, yes.
Okay, so if you're in the front building, you've got to walk all the way back to the rear building in order to take your garbage out?
There's an entrance on this, there's exits and entrances here. So if you're on the east wing, you would come out this door, and if you're on the west wing, you would likely come out that door. So it has been located somewhat centrally to the building, and that's why it's been designed that way.
Are the apartment units handicapped, how many of them handicapped accessible?
Do you want to answer that, Jack or Tim? You would have to go to the mic.
And I'd also like to clarify, when you asked if this was a HUD project or it was subsidized, I answered no to the subsidized aspect under this. However, this is through HUD using tax credits from a funding mechanism. So the HUD and State Housing Agency is involved in this process, however, it is not subsidized. If that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Sampson, Sampson Architects, architects for the project. We're showing, I believe, four fully handicapped, as-built, accessible units. However, they're all able to be converted. There's no difference between an ADA accessible unit, with the exception of the blocking is already provided in the walls, four grab bars miscellaneous ADA requirements. Like I said, the blocking is installed, the actual grab bars are not. There's no difference between the ADA unit and what is not designated as an ADA unit.
Any hallways or things like that within the interior of the apartment and whatnot are all wide enough for wheelchair accessibility?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd also like to add that the hallways are, I think, six feet, Tim, is that correct? So they're oversized hallways, and all the doorways and entrance ways are all 30 or better in each unit. So that's why you said that they're basically, and then everything inside of the unit is generally blocked and set in case we need additional handicap bars, it's all set to go. So that's kind of a plan that's put in place prior to, so we have that there available to us if we need it.
That's standard for every unit, Mr. Franks? The wide doorways and all for all the units in it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All the units. Yep. Any other questions from the board?
I just have a couple of questions. The propane tanks, underground or above ground?
They're, yeah, I'm just going to show you where they are again. They are below ground.
Okay.
Located in one, two tanks here and two tanks there, but they're situated below ground.
Okay, and what allowance has been given for visitor parking? You're cutting back or suggesting to cut back to a certain point? Older people like myself probably will have visitors.
Absolutely. So I think, so I think the important, and that's part of the reason why we wanted to share the data, right? So a company has done a study of a number of these facilities and has said that the parking requirement is 0.8 spaces per unit. That accounts for visitors in that study. So that would be, if you round that number up, that would be 76 spaces. We're proposing, you know, in excess of that, so we don't anticipate any need for visitors even with this layout. We think this is a conservative layout. But what we're showing you in the plan set is we could add parking. The site will support the full amount of parking per your regulations. We just don't believe it's necessary. And if it was necessary, it would be built, because ultimately we have to have a viable project. So we think that, and it's a great question, Mr. Lane, but we do think that the parking as proposed does address the visitor threshold as well.
Just one other question tonight. In your presentation, were you implying that you've already received some sort of information from FAA as to the size of your building? Because that's kind of what I heard.
I'm sorry, sir, can you ask that again into the microphone? I didn't get the full question, I'm sorry.
The question is, was the implication that I heard was that he has information, kind of implying from the FAA that their building is in compliance height-wise? And I'm asking, how can that be determined if you have not submitted an FAA application? And they have not answered as to whether or not 43 feet is too high for their approach? And if it is, then we've got, you know, we're kind of...
Yeah, and I think the question is a good one, but the answer is, we've already done the work, right? So we've done a number of developments along this corridor, the highway, all of which requires the submission to FAA for approval. FAA evaluates the published glide slope elevation, right? So we've taken and done a survey of the runway. We've honestly, we did the survey the whole length of the runway because the next project that we're presenting tonight needs the same permit. And the fire department that we've worked with the town on needs the same permit. And the John Flatley Company project that we proposed off Safford Drive needs the same permit. So all of these projects that we've received at one time have presented to this board need that permit. FAA bases their decision on an elevation. It's a published elevation. If your design falls below the glide slope, you have to file a form with them, but they're going to approve that. And so what we're telling you is this design, the highest point of the building, at the closest point of the glide slope, is below the glide slope. And so I'm telling you, based on experience that we've had with that permitting process, that there will be no issues with the design that we have before you tonight. We still have to get the permit, and we still have to go through that process. It doesn't make sense for us to do that beforehand. We ultimately need to get approval from this board first so that we can apply for those permits. Because there's fees and timeframes and, you know, other things associated with that that, you know, would kind of be out of line if we did that beforehand. It's a good question, but that's how we know, because we have the data.
Just that this is 43 feet, four stories high, and your next presentation is two stories.
But it's, right, but the stories are relative of what your existing ground at the site, and ultimately what you're evaluating is the glide slope, which is a fixed elevation.
Any other board members have any questions at this time?
Yes, I have an additional question.
Go ahead. It's still flowing around in there, we've got plenty of time.
I'll have this relay one very good voice.
And Jane Johnson has a question.
There was something brought up at the Conservation Commission meeting about the chambers. Could you explain those more clearly? Where does the water go after it's gone in the chamber and treated?
It ultimately, so what happens is the state sets thresholds for infiltration, right? This soil properties on this site are too fast, so we actually have to line the bottom, we have to line the bottom of the chamber system with a concrete sand, which is a smaller particle sand. It slows the infiltration down. And then we have to apply a factor of safety of two to slow that infiltration rate down even more. But where the water goes is it infiltrates into the ground. It's not a lot different than a septic system. Like everybody that is on a septic and flushes their toilet, those designs are generally only two and a half feet, in some cases, two feet to seasonal. Drainage basin or drainage infiltration area has to be a minimum of three feet to seasonal, and so that's how this is designed. But it infiltrates, you know, down through the ground, the depth, the seasonal is required because treatment is occurring in some instances through that zone, which is the same reason why a septic system needs a distance between the estimated seasonal high water table. Yep.
Okay, Alone, you have a question?
Yes, I think I saw that there were eight two-bedroom apartments.
That's correct.
Is that really sufficient, or do you think that possibly it could be increased to 10 or 12?
I mean, I don't do that market study or analysis, but the proposal is, you know, for eight two-bedrooms at this time. And I think there's, I mean, I can speak personally to the housing needs, you know, in this area. You know, we know that there is a lot of people that can't find housing. And what I mean by personally, my wife is a social worker in this community, and we look forward to, she looks forward to, you know, people who qualify for this housing, you know, renting these units and maybe opening up some other units in the area, which might be two-bedroom units. So, you know, additional housing stock creates additional housing in different ways throughout a community. So we really look forward to this. I think you're... I think your question's good, I just don't have a good answer. Do you want to try to answer that one?
Sure.
Jack Franks, again, Avenue Development Group. Eight's not enough. We could build 100 more, and they'd be filled immediately. The housing stock in Cheshire County, as it is around the state, is at a less than 1% vacancy rate. We're nearing zero in some places. By some estimates by the governor's office, they suggest 25,000 units needed today to bring us to a healthy vacancy rate across the state. Calculations said we've done internally, or somewhere around 40,000. So the waiting list here for senior facilities in the Cheshire County region, in some cases, exceeds seven years. So the short answer is no, probably not, without question. But the eight plus 68 will go a long way to helping folks here in the area that do need adequate housing.
Having recently gone through some health issues myself, at one point, I was considering getting a caretaker to come in and assist me. In a one-bedroom apartment, I couldn't, because I didn't have room for a caretaker to live. And once I realized that, you know, it meant that I would have to leave my apartment, you know, that idea went out the window. I just feel that, given my own experiences, that, you know, the extra bedroom can be very important.
Well, for now, we're looking at a plan that they presented with the eight that they presented there. So we'll go with that for right now. Is there any other questions on the engineering part of the presentation, Mr. Brennan Duske? If not, I think you said the architect was going to make a presentation, or you did not say that?
I think he's here to answer questions.
To answer questions, okay.
Yep.
All right. Me putting him on the spot. All right. If there are no other questions from the member... I mean, from the board members, then members of the public, if you would like questions on this particular item, just if you'd stand up, probably have to come up to the microphone here, just state your name and spell it if you could, and have at it. Are there any questions from the public? Who's first?
Jay Ward, 16 Houghton Point. I've got lots of questions. Let's start with the parking. And some of this is... I just need to know more about the regulations.
I'm having a hard time understanding you, Dave, sorry.
I just need to know more about the regulations. I think the... Let me start by saying, I'm approaching this from the idea that this project is too large for the site, and that the reason that I don't want to see a parking reduction is that I think that the site requires the spaces that it requires with our procedures, playing word, rules, and so on. And a parking reduction might have made sense with the old ones, old regulations, which were two parking spaces per unit, but I think it makes less sense with the one and a half per unit and plus additional half space for a second bedroom. So it seems to me that 118 parking spaces is a good size for this. It's hard for me to realize how that might fit in. I'll get to that later. You mentioned a study, which came up with the .8 figure per unit for parking. That was for low-income residents, and I know Mr. Franks said that he expects low-income residents in this development. But he also said that there's a lot of demand for senior housing. And that would suggest to me that there are going to be some folks who aren't low-income who want to live here. And they're likely to have parking needs that would exceed the .8. And I think that the parking also leads into my other concerns about the landscaping. As I read the site plan review regulations, we are required to have 10% of the interior of the parking space landscaped. I'm not sure I can see how that works with the two islands that are... The four islands that are presented there. We are required to have the islands every 20 spaces. I know that what's been done here is put two spaces back-to-back, so that it's two by two by two by two, 13 in a row, which, to me, is 26 spaces between those islands. I also know that there's supposed to be a tree every 10 feet in those islands, and I don't see that on the plan. Of course, we could always add more trees than was shown on the plan. But it just seems to me that landscaping interior to the parking structures as shown here is not adequate to what the site plan review regulations suggest. Also, in terms of landscaping, the... Just in general, islands, according to the verbiage in the site plan review regulations, islands are supposed to be used to break up the impervious surface in the parking area. And I'm just not sure that there's enough breaking up of the large expanse of parking area there. That's my personal view, and maybe you don't share that, but that's where I am. Also, I guess here's an area that I'm not really certain of. The regulations, as I read it, require the 10-foot landscape buffer around the edges of the building. Is it only the side that's fronting the highway that needs that? Because it could be read to mean that it has to have 10-foot landscape buffer around the entire building, which is not true on the sides. And I don't know. Scott, can you help me with that?
I think it's by the public way. I think it's...
Okay. And so since the airport way is not a public way, we don't need that. Okay. And the same thing applies to the buffers on the sides of those properties, because the Jehovah's Witness is not a residential area, so the fence is adequate according to the regulations. It just seems to me that because there is no landscaping in the Jehovah's Witness parking lot, that we also need to consider whether or not there should be additional landscaping in this project.
It's mainly intended to divide a multifamily from a residential.
Yes, understood.
But that's in there for...
Again, so I would like to see... I would like to see more landscaping in the project, and maybe there's room for it inside the parking area. Maybe it could be redesigned. I'm not sure. And then some things about the stormwater plan, as I looked at it, you said that all the water's going to be shunted to the back of the property. But in the stormwater plan I read, the southeast corner has a catch basin where water is going to go into. That southeast corner is right opposite the entrance to Houghton Point, where I live. And on the other side of that highway, there is a puddle every time it rains significantly. And I'm just worried that the catch basin, it's unit one or whatever it is, catch basin one in the southeast corner, is... I want to be sure that's adequate to handle the water that's going to be coming off the front parking lot. If you look at the grade there, it's going to slope down to that catch basin one. The plan says it will be there, it'll be adequate, just not certain that that's been mentioned. And I didn't hear you mention that, but the way I read the plan, that does happen. The front southeast corner, there slopes down into a catch basin, right there at the corner, which may be already there, but I'm a little worried about the water buildup on Route 32, since there is water buildup already that freezes and forms a big puddle in the... On the east side of Route 32, right across from there. Also, in the stormwater plan, we mentioned this in the Conservation Commission, it says that there will be qualitative treatment of the stormwater, and I just want some clarification as to what that is.
And which would you like him to answer first? I have a number of questions.
I guess I just wanted to talk.
Start with the...
I would be happy to answer all.
Yeah, well, start with what...
So start with the parking again, and, you know, and convince me that the study for low income applies to this development.
This project has... There we go. This project is income restricted. So I think that was clearly presented by the owner or the developer, and just to clarify, it is income restricted. There is a housing need for people of all income levels, especially those that are income restricted. And the fact that it's an income-restricted person that can move in here means that likely the place they're coming from will provide for people of those income constraints as well to relocate, because there's not a lot of stock, if any, available for that in the area.
So when you say income restricted, you mean if somebody makes over a certain amount, they can't live there?
That's my understanding, correct.
Okay. I stand corrected on that. I'm still worried about, same thing you were about visitors and so on, and...
Can I just address some of this?
Yes, please. Please, go right ahead.
Work down through them. So there seems to be a misunderstanding from your standpoint. We're not asking for a parking reduction, because the site can't support it. In fact, the plan shows what the parking lot would look like with 118 spaces. We're asking for a reduction, because it's not needed. And responsible development and good planning is incorporated in the regulations with that 20% reduction that the site... In the site plan regulations, that this board can grant. If there was a parking need here, if, for some reason, the 40 years of study that's been done that says .8 spaces is not adequate, there's room here to build more spaces, and that stormwater system will handle more spaces. So it's not a matter of the site being too small. In fact, it's... And we've demonstrated that with the plan, because we've showed the 118 spaces. It's just a matter of proposing a good development, a responsible development, that... And we believe 94 spaces is still about 20 spaces more than we need, close to 20 spaces more than we need. When you think about that, 20 spaces is a lot. I mean, an average parking space is 200 square feet, it has an associated aisle. There's a lot of runoff and impervious area associated with that. If we're not paving an area, it gets to be left open in the back, and, you know, maybe be some green area or something. But so, wanted to clear up the confusion with that. The regulations allow it. It's not a waiver. It's a discussion item with the planning board. If this board said, "We'll conditionally approve the project, but we want you to build 118 spaces," it can be done. We just would prefer not to do that. In regards to the landscaping, we meet all of the criteria within the landscaping standards. We can walk down through those standards if you would like. There are some standards in there that don't apply.
Point them out. Go to the landscaping plan and just walk down through it.
Can you show me how that's 10% of landscaping in that parking area?
We did a calculation, and it's on... It's shown on the plans.
Oh, okay. Can you read that to me? Because I can't read that from here.
10%... So the first note says 10% of the interior parking lots. Letter A, rear lot, 76 spaces. 10% of it is 1,232 square feet required, and we're proposing just about 1,900 square feet. We actually enlarged those islands in the back, so that we could exceed that standard by a larger margin. The front parking lot, 11 spaces, 10% is 178 square feet. We have 3,400 square feet provided. We added more landscaping along the front of the building, and then we have a much larger landscaped area along the highway and on that side.
So how do you get the 1,900? Can you explain to me how that 1,900 of landscaping is calculated?
It's the area of these islands, and then...
So the islands look to me to be about 30 feet long? Is that correct?
No, they're about probably 40 feet long. I mean, you would have to have the area of...
I'm using the graphic scale there, and it looks to be 30 feet.
Well, the parking spaces are 18, and so there's at least two of those.
Maybe 36 is what you're saying? Just looks like the parking spaces extend beyond the islands.
I mean, I'm not going to go through a calculation, you know, on the fly here at the meeting, but we are certifying that we meet that standard. And we've presented, you know, these calculations on a number of sites, and what we're presenting is consistent with the way that's been interpreted over a large variety of projects. So I think when you look at the calculations, and maybe you look at it a little closer, you'll see that we meet that standard.
I just want to say for the...
Just like an interrupt, and if the engineers certify it, then it's held by the code enforcement holds them to that certification, so...
That's good to hear.
It's got to be correct.
I'm just saying that if I consider that to be 30 feet long and 10 feet... And 10 feet wide, that's 300 an island. Four of those is 1,200, not 1,900. So it's just hard for me to see how the extra part gets in there. But I'll move on. And it's up to the planning board to decide whether there's enough landscaping there. It's not my decision, so that's enough said.
I guess just to speak to another one of your comments, if you don't mind. I don't want any of them to be missed, and we're here tonight to answer these questions. So as it relates to catch basin one, which is...
Yes.
This catch basin here, that's an existing catch basin. So there's a small area around that basin that has to drain to it. You know, we don't want to take the highway drainage into the site, right? So the grading locally around that catch basin, and I mean, you know, within maybe three or four feet of it, will drain to that basin. The remainder of the area will come internally. And the reason why we have so many catch basins on this site is because they are designed... We evaluate the capacity of the rim, the surface structure, and make sure that the contributing area that's draining to it, that it can handle it. And so that's why we have... I mean, we have a number of them along this southern side. We have four. On average, catch basins on a road design can be about 400 feet apart, just to put it in perspective. We're certainly more frequent than 400 feet here, because we want to make sure there's no ponding and not going to be any issues.
I thought the stormwater plan was very detailed and really did show calculations that seemed to make it work. I just wanted to point out that I'm a little concerned about that corner, because any additional water there, I'm worried a little bit. But your expertise, it looked like you'd studied it for the 50-year flood, et cetera, was going to be fine, that catch basin. The only other question is, is that catch basin, since it is an existing one, also going to be maintained by Avangro, et cetera, et cetera?
It will not. That catch basin lies inside the state right away, so that'll be maintained by the state. And the state will review the drainage and make sure that, you know, the concerns that you're raising relative to that structure are addressed with our design. That is, that's within their jurisdiction.
Okay. And what about the qualitative treatment? What is that?
Sure. So qualitative treatment is handled in a number of different fashions throughout the system. First of all, we can start with the catch basins, right? These catch basins have sumps in them that'll capture sediment from the runoff. Also, we have oil debris hoods that are installed in those catch basins, so there'll be a permanent water elevation. And those are typically located as you get closer to the infiltration system in the back. But you'll have hoods on those catch basins. It creates a permanent water elevation, so if there's any trash or debris, it'll float and get caught in that catch basin. Oil floats, gas floats, so that'll be, you know, taken out in that particular basin. And so from there, the water goes into the hood, ultimately will work its way into this chamber system. The chamber system has what's called an isolator row, which is wrapped in fabric, and that meters the water into the other cells of the chamber. So water will go there, it gets treated through the, you know, the fabric and so on, goes into other cells of the chambers, and then ultimately, the last line of treatment is that separation to seasonal, which is three feet. And so you get removal of sediments, you'll get removal of, you know, oils and things of that nature. I mean, some of the practices that are really getting pushed, you know, call for porous pavement products. pavement products where, you know, gasoline and oil actually gets caught up in the particles of the sand and gravel and breaks down before it gets to, you know, gets to the seasonal high water table. So that's how, you know, we're proposing, and this meets state treatment standards, which are elevated quite substantially. And the UNH Stormwater Center has actually done a number of reports and models of this system, and it's proven to have great removal through those waters.
Yeah, I just didn't understand what qualitative means. As far as I'm concerned, what you're talking about is passive treatment of a thing. In other words, you're not doing anything active to treat it, it's going through filtration, it's going through...
It is passive, yeah. There's no active treatment here. The only time you would have active treatment is if you had, you know, some kind of contamination. I mean, we don't have that, you know, on this site. And then the quantitative treatment is rates, right? So it's making sure we don't have an increase in the rate of runoff leaving the site, and we certainly address that through this design as well.
Okay, I think, I think I need to sit back and let other people have a chance. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you. Any other members from the public like to ask some questions?
Vicky Scolera, 33 Lake Street. Vicky Scolera.
You're welcome.
Personally, less parking spaces to me are better, but I guess my question is, do you compare where these studies were done? For instance, I would argue that anybody that lives there would need a vehicle to get food unless they ate out every day. There's no sidewalks. So I'm just confused about if these studies were done in places where you could walk to places to get whatever you need. You can't get to a drugstore, you can't get to a grocery store, you can certainly get to dinner pot and take out foods, but I just don't understand how people who live there could be on .8 cars and get their daily needs satisfied, given where the site is.
Do you happen to know what the answer to that was?
I mean, I hear you did studies, and I get that, I just...
That's a good question, you know, what it was based on.
Taking a look through the report to see if they list their studies, so if we can move on. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to try to answer that question once I have that information.
Okay, and any other members?
Good evening. Mark Scolera, 33 Lake Street, just met my wife. You know, while you were talking, the .8 kind of struck me as a very low number, and certainly, you know, you're going to pick a study that's going to support what you're trying to do. In that time, I did some quick Googling, and in 2019, a project in Boston required one parking space per unit. It went down to .9. There's places that require 1.25 parking spaces per unit, so I think that number is low. What I'd like to address is the harmony of the project, where it sits on Route 32. In the packet, I believe it's page 65, was a rendition that was previously provided to prior hearings, that shows you the difference between the surrounding buildings and the size of the proposed building at that time, which is not too different than what we're looking at here. The, if you look at, and I don't know, it would be great if you were able to call it up over there, but page 73 in the packet shows the building and where it sits along the western shore of Wilson Pond. Most of the houses in Wilson Pond are actually on the eastern side. I would have a tendency to say we're looking at 60%, 70% of those houses, being able to see this building towering 45 feet over their neighbors on the other side of the pond. Now take that into consideration, everybody here, especially the people in the first row, people here on the board. How would you like if all of a sudden this huge building was being put somewhere in the vicinity where you were able to see it from where you live? Okay? I don't think it's acceptable. What you described as the building, it sounds wonderful. It's just too big. It's too high, is what it comes down to, in my opinion, okay? So I really look at that, page 73 in there, I think that's key. Now that's the people on the eastern side of the pond, and probably going to the southern side of it. The people on the west side of it, they're coming out their front door, and if they're not looking right at this building, three houses, four houses down from where they live on the street, they're turning their head left or right and they're seeing it, okay? It's just too big. There is no structure greater than two stories along Route 32 in that general vicinity. It just does not fit our surroundings. And I understand the need for housing and all that stuff, I get it. It's just not the right location, okay? Businesses, there's a couple of actual business structures, but a lot of the businesses on Route 32 are within house, I would consider to say houses. It's just not that type of environment. And, you know, we're trying to fight tooth and nail to preserve Wilson Pond and that surrounding area. It's just not fair to the 70, 80 houses on Wilson Pond to have something of this size built there where people are going to wake up and instead of seeing just a nice view across a pond, their eyes are going to go right towards what they see over the houses of this structure. It's going to peep people's sunsets. So I think the, we got to consider that. That is so damn important to me, okay, and to a lot of other people. There was 47 signatures, you know, on that submission, okay? There's a lot more people, the surrounding neighborhoods north of Wilson Pond, there are also people bothered by this. It's just too big, okay? And I'll leave it at that for right now. I don't know, I'm not really giving you anything to address, I'm really just, really trying to, I guess, reach out and appeal to people to make the right decision. I guess as the board, I thought I was stopping, but maybe I'm not. As the board, I would say, you know, let's, don't be lenient here, be stingy, you know, let's, let's see if we can get this reduced to just two stories, or God forbid even three, but four is just totally ridiculous. It really is, in my opinion, so.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Franks was going to just speak to the study and the relevance.
Oh, you're going to address the parking study, is that what it was?
Yes, I could do that. So the study that Mr. Brandon has shared with you is one that was done by New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. It's been over the course of nearly 40 years. So this information is accumulation of data that's been gathered. So this is a state agency that deals with senior and workforce housing all over the state. The .8 is their accumulative data that shows that a lot of senior facilities don't need that parking. So when you look at what we have, 76 units at eight tenths of a percent would really be about 60. So that said, with regard to some of the concerns about the ability to be mobile, I'll do just a quick search here, but I knew most of these answers anyways, but a friendly bus, Cheshire Village at Home, City Express, Ready Rides, and a place called Community Volunteer Transportation Center, there's organizations like Southwest Community Services here in the area as well. So there's ample opportunity, you know, you've got Uber, you've got taxis. A lot of folks that are older just don't have their own vehicles, don't need their own vehicles. And again, you know, 60 is probably the right number, but if we wanted to add 34 more to get an additional 34, we've got ample parking there without question, and ample opportunity for the seniors to have rides if they need them.
And I just wanted to touch on the numbers, okay? Because I don't want people to get caught up with the .8. The reason we're presenting the .8 is because that's a study that speaks specifically to this type of housing. What we're proposing is actually about 1.24. That's what we're proposing with 94 spaces. So I don't want .8 to energize somebody, that's not, that's not what we have on the plan. What we have on the plan that we would like to build is 94 falls within the town's ability to reduce by 20% and is actually about 1.25 if we round the number. So, you know, I think it's safe to say that, and I agree with what Mr. Franks said, there is a lot of services locally, and, you know, 62 and older, as we know, you know, I have some relatives where unfortunately they aren't able to drive anymore because of their, you know, age and ailments. So there's going to be, there's going to be some people in the development that maybe is dealing with that, and there's the ability for some transportation, but more importantly, we're proposing something that meets the regulation, we think is responsible and is about 1.25 for account. Thank you.
Thank you. That gentleman over here was going to speak.
Ryan, R-Y-A-N. There's been quite a bit that's been said about the size and the characteristics of how large and how looming this building will be for all of us. There was recently a project in Keene that had a light study, and it was rejected for the amount of sunlight that was going to be robbed of any neighbor. We were recently looking at what 45 feet would mean for us. We'll never see a sunset again. Anything on that west side is gone. And that's just from our vantage point. Mark mentioned 60 homes that'll be affected. That's 60 taxpayers. Future generations, that's what the planning board should be about here, is this a viable project? I'm all for housing, I really am, but it's too large for this tiny piece of property that has a single home. I don't know what else I can add. I'm frustrated.
Do you have a question, Mr. Ryan, for the engineers?
I think the question is why? Why this is even being considered? With the amount of exceptions that we've seen that this project has to go through, I just don't understand how we can get here and still consider this. It's so large in a tiny piece of property. This is a planning board that should be considering about what it's going to look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now. I wish I had a better question other than why.
No, the answer to some of that, Mr. Ryan, is that if it fits the zoning, which all of us voted for, the zoning, you know, the whole town voted for it, and we update from time to time, if it fits it, and they meet all the parameters of the site plan, then it can go in, you know, density-wise, well, density is different, this is going on a density from 2020, yeah, because it was refused at the ZBA at one time. But anyway, if this were to go in today under current density, it wouldn't be that big. We've changed that, you know, the town voted to lower that density.
I remember that.
It meets the density requirements, so it can be there, I mean, if it fits everything else.
And that's not a separate project, other than the fact that that was for the exception, and this is under the planning board? It's not a separate case? And the town did speak and say that we don't want this? And I would think this is the chance where you enforce that.
The, I suppose a chance, you're talking about the special exception that was granted by the zoning board of adjustment, is that correct? And yes, that, I suppose your concerns might have more weight in that regard as it being compatible to the neighborhood. That's one of the things that the ZBA considers, but the planning board doesn't consider that. Once it reduces here, the planning board considers, does it meet site plan or your regulations, and does it meet the zoning regulations? And we're here to see that it actually does. We can look at other things, as we have, and we will on this project, but that particular one, if it's allowed under the special exception, then the planning board has to look at it under that.
So it's still not a new case, even though that since that time, the town has already voted on it, as you pointed out with the referendum?
It isn't because it was appealed in the court system, and the court system said, you go back to the ZBA, they made a mistake, they get a chance to correct it, and they did, but it has to go under the original zoning that was in place at that time. Which brings up another point, which we're going to talk about later on at the meeting here.
Okay. I wish I had a better question other than that, but thank you.
Well, you may come up with another one. Thank you.
Sorry, I just want to point out that the front setback off of Old Homestead Highway is 30 feet, and we actually are proposing the structure to be at 76 feet. So we have pushed the structure back off the highway quite a bit over what the, you know, the zoning setback is to try to, you know, to pull it back from the road, and so I think that that is an improvement, you know, that we've incorporated in the design and Avenue has incorporated into the layout.
Yeah, thanks for pointing it out, yeah, that would be an improvement.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you, maybe I misheard you. Are you saying we're evaluating this under 2020 or 2022?
We're evaluating this under 2020, and that brings up some other issues, which, like I said, we're going to discuss here later on, to get done with questions and things like that. But we, you know, as far as density goes, that density is allowed under when it was first submitted to the zoning board of adjustment. And that, that holds true if it was appealed, and they won the appeal, which they did, so it still holds true under the original 2020 zoning.
Okay, but we're evaluating the plat and everything under 2022?
Well, that's, you might as well discuss it now, that's the thing.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go there.
That's the thing, it's, it was approved under the 2020 zoning, well, zoning, town zoning laws, and the density requirements were much greater at that time, so this density was allowed for that. But also the parking requirements were greater to go along with greater density. Parking requirements were two spaces per unit at that time. So now the density has been lowered, and also the parking requirements have been lowered. So it's like we're cherry picking back and forth. We're using 2020 density requirements with 2022 parking requirements, as well as the 20% reduction, which was not in effect that I believe at that time in 2020. So the planning board has to talk about that and discuss it to see what we're going to do, probably have to get some kind of a legal advice from the attorney, I would think, to see which one, whether we're going to cherry pick the zoning ordinance, or we're going to, whether we can go by all of them or not. So that's where that is. Right now, we're just reviewing it as to what they've presented to us, if there are particulars as to which zoning goes for parking and which goes for the density, we'll have to get a clarification of the town attorney, I'm sure, on that. Thank you. Any other members from the public? Yes, or ma'am?
I'm Anne Heffronon. I also live at 16, H-E-F-F, H-E-F-F-E-R-N-O-N. Couple of quick questions, just for the record, there's not really any public transportation as yet in Swansea. They're working on it, but it doesn't really exist, and they're trying to make it happen now, and Southwestern's working on it, HCS is working on it, but not really there. So if these people don't have vehicles, they really can't walk around, because I walk around all the time, and it's a big problem. because I walk around all the time and it's a big problem. And my second question is, so this is low-income housing, right? Because you had said at one of the zoning board meetings that it wasn't low-income housing. So is it or isn't it? I mean, you're playing with semantics and words, but what is it? Affordable is low income, right? No?
Well, just to address me, and I will address the applicant if you want. You want to know from the applicant if this is low income or not a low income. Is that correct?
I mean, if it's affordable housing, it's low income, correct?
I don't know. Is that your question?
That's my question. That's one of my questions. And then this study that you did, what year is it? It's a multiple number of years, but what year did it finalize? Because some of the studies done that were presented to the zoning board were pretty old. And I would just like to say to all of you, I invite you to come to my house, all of you, any of you. I will supply the coffee and let you watch the traffic. I know it's a zoning board thing, but I will, I invite you to see that traffic and see what happens every morning and every afternoon and the speed and the hassles. And some neighbors can't even get out on Route thirty-two sometimes. So if you add that many more units, and yes, they do drive, they'll be going places.
Thank you, Ms. Heffronon.
Heffronon.
Heffronon, I'm sorry. Mr. Frank, would you like to address that question, please?
This is an age-restricted and income-restricted property using low-income housing tax credits as a funding source. The questions at the zoning board centered around whether or not this was Section Eight housing, and this is not Section Eight housing. So it is a funding mechanism using low-income housing tax credits for folks at sixty percent AMI and below. They have to qualify. They can't make too much money. They can't make too little money. But this is typical of what we see for senior housing around the entire state of New Hampshire, New England, and across the country.
Thank you.
And the study, what year was the study finalized?
Study was two thousand seventeen or eighteen.
Two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah. So, so five years, but that's, I'd like to just point out again that this is many, many years of data by a state agency that does this all over the coun, all over the state.
And again, I don't think the study needs that much energy other than stating that it was, it's a resource for showing and representing to the board that this type of use doesn't require the same amount of parking as market rate housing, which is your, your regulations don't differentiate between types of residential housing. And so we're sharing this as a piece of information, but what we're requesting is allowed in your ordinance.
Thank you. Any other members from the public like to speak?
Jeanette Groom, V O T, G R, six picture point. So it was my understanding, I was at the last zoning board meeting when this was approved. It was my understanding at the very end of the meeting, before they approved it, they specifically included a clause that said this was senior housing, that they were not going to pass it unless that clause was in there, senior housing. So I think you need to go back and look at the zoning board's approval and decision and to see that that was in there.
Well, they have, they presented it as age-restricted, meaning sixty-two and over, and that would be senior.
But now, now they're talking about low-income housing.
No, not really. I think what he, what he had mentioned was that it comes from low-income credits to build it, but the, the income, it's, I would have to say it's moderate income housing, I guess, the way he explained it. But it's not low-income housing, but the low-income housing credits are being used to build it, if that makes any sense.
It's senior housing.
Yes, it is senior housing. And also, they have to have a moderate, a very moderate income in which to qualify.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. What other things? So it's true about the transportation, that we do not have transportation into Swansea because I was a caretaker for my mother and that was not available. So maybe Anne had mentioned that they're working on it, but that is not available now. I also would like you to specifically go through the design of the building, exactly what it's going to look like. And if we have any input as to what it's going to look like, because that has a lot to do with the, what we consider to be offensive and obnoxious to the neighborhood, that it's just a square building, it doesn't fit into this rural character. I was the one during the zoning board that talked a lot about the master plan and the rural character. And, you know, actually, interesting, on the website for Swansea, if you go to the website, there's a beautiful picture of Swansea, pictures of lakes, trees, fields, with animals grazing. And I really feel like, you know, that the town is becoming something different. And I would hope, I really hope and pray and require the members of the planning board who we do, the residents do elect, to please consider the master plan, the rural character in the design of the building. And I would like to know specifically exactly, I'd like him to describe, whoever, to describe exactly what the building's going to look like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, you have another, another question?
I don't think so.
Nope? Okay. I think that would be maybe for the architect or would that be you, Mr. Brenner?
Yeah, we'll let Mr. Sampson come up here and talk about the building. As we've discussed to some extent, it's a four-story building. There are sixty-eight...
Just a small, we do just identify yourself. We know who you are, but on, on Zoom, they don't know who you are.
So Tim Sampson, Sampson Architects, Architect of Record for the building. So it is four stories. It's, someone had mentioned forty-five feet. It's forty-three and change. The forty-five was actually the glide slope. We have sixty-eight one-bedroom and eight two-bedroom units being proposed. The building is eight, sort of an H-shaped building. There are really two main entrances, one towards Old Homestead Highway, one towards the back. The building is a little bit different than what we had presented at one point due to some building code changes that we had to address. So there are two, two-bedroom units per floor. The center core here actually has management offices on the first floor. There's a large community space for the building residents and then some mechanical space. There is an elevator that serves each of the end built, end units with the means of egress being here, which ties into the site plan. So we've tried to use materials, details that have been previously used on projects here in Swansea. We have a mix of vinyl siding, materials being clapboards and shakes, and also colors. It is a flat-roofed building. And then, and then here are three sort of exterior perspectives that show some of the parking, some of the exterior of the building with some of the proposed lighting. These two here show the entrance, the main entrances to the building. And the, the images are a little dark, but the chat actually printed these for me, so everyone's printer's a little bit different. I think the ones I handed out to you guys, I was able to print at my office and are a little bit lighter. It might be slightly easier to read. But it's a mix of, you know, green, green clapboards and shakes, yellow clapboards and shakes, and then a sort of a typical residential white exterior trim. Happy to answer any questions that anybody else might have that might be more detailed than that overview of the building.
Any members of the board have any questions on the architectural plans? If not, members of the public have questions on the architectural plans?
Please, please speak. Oh, okay. Jolie Fanning. So the one question I have looking at that building, I mean, I'm sorry, but it really is like, all of our houses have pitched roof. Is there a reason why this is industrial-looking? It doesn't, it doesn't look at all like the neighborhood or like it fits in the neighborhood? So that's a question. Why can't it be more in line with what the neighborhood looks like? Is that, that just, it just doesn't look anything like the neighborhood? And the second thing, which is probably for him, and I don't know the details of what y'all were talking about, but the drainage and some here and some here and some here. And the comment was, well, we could put another one here, but we have to be fiscally responsible or we have to be concerned with the money we're spending. We, the town and residents, don't have to be concerned with the money they're spending. So if it needs that other piece, which somebody here asked about, I don't think it's up to us to cheap out on it.
I think I was the one who asked about it, and I was asking about it just to see how it worked, how it had a plan to work because of the, the drains went beyond that infiltration system. It came to the backside and went the other way. I wondered why he did it that way.
Right.
And the reason was, so they have more or less a relief valve in case there was a huge, huge storm there somewhere and it started to backfeed into the infiltration system, maybe causing damage there. It would overflow into the other one. But that's why. And he said, yeah, they could put drains on the other side of it, but they don't really need them. And, and looking at the plans, I'd have to agree with them, don't really need them because it carries all the water down to the backside and into the sea. It goes both ways.
Okay.
That's what that was.
And I just want to say I don't want it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public have any questions on the architectural part of it? Yes, ma'am.
Jeanette Groom, six picture point.
And just a second, would you like to see an actual, the larger, up close?
I absolutely would.
Oh, you have, I think you have one down there.
Up close and personal.
I'll get you one down, I'll get you one down there.
I'm a very visual learner, so I need pictures. I want pictures. And it is quite ugly. It does not fit, you know, when you think about what they were building, I think the ambulance by the rotary, what a lovely building that is, right? I mean, when you, it just fits into the whole character, you know, rural, not rural, whatever, the character of the environment that we live in. And that's why we live here in Swansea. We live for a certain environment, a certain energy, a certain feeling, a certain neighborhood, and this does not meet any of those requirements. And I know they probably need, and I don't know, maybe this is a question, why do they need so many units? Is it because the funding requires them? In order to get the funding, they have to have a certain number of units? That's a question that I would like answered. And I also was wondering, I understand that the building, that the housing that they're building on Route ten required a pitched roof. And I'd like to know why it did require that and what's the advantage or disadvantage of a flat roof versus a pitched roof?
Well, we can answer that one on that one. The reason that one was required to have a pitched roof down there is because all the surrounding buildings, there was a huge apartment, building right across the street with pitched roof, multi-pitches on that roof. All the buildings along that hallway had all pitched roofs on them in that part of town. So that's why that was required there. In this particular case, in my opinion, I don't know about the rest of the board, in my opinion, you know, there's mixed use over there. Just on the other side of where this is going to be built, there are two giant airplane hangars over there, you know, oddball-looking roofs on there. And then there's a flat roof on the fire, the old fire station over there. It isn't in the middle of, we'll say pitched roof territory like that one was down there. So that would be the reason.
And my argument would be it's in the middle of two-story territory.
It is. You're right, yeah.
And it does not meet the requirements of a two-story territory.
I don't know what those requirements are, but...
I know, but that reasoning with the pitched roof doesn't fly with, you know, the reason that this is four stories and in an environment that has nothing to do with the size of a building like this. And do you have this rendering, you have this new packet?
Yes, we do.
Can you put that up on the screen so everybody can see it?
I don't know if there's a way to do that. You, you can pass that around, I suppose. We all have a copy of that.
We do.
Everything on the screen is, comes from his computer over there. I don't know if that he has a, a copy of that there, but you can pass it around to the, everyone in the room here, if you like. They've all seen it? And anybody else like to ask some questions about either architectural or, you aren't done yet?
I think I'm done. Just one more.
Oh, yeah, have a look. Anybody else have any questions for the architect or the engineers in that, to that matter?
I have one more question. So what is the planning board, this is the first time I've been to a planning board meeting. So what can the planning board do to allow this building to fit more into our neighborhood is what I would like to know.
Well, we can try and persuade them to make it more aesthetically pleasing, you know, those types of things. Of course, we make sure it fits into what the zoning requires. And so far, it looks like it does fit into what it requires. But again, we've had other applicants in here who, you know, have listened to the public and they have decided, well, we'll try and do something to dress something up or change something a little bit around, you know, to try and be good neighbors. We can ask them to do that.
Okay, so I would, I would like to ask the developers if they can consider, and I know everything is fiscally, they want to be fiscally responsible, but I would really, you know, ask them to, to understand where this is being built. And I would like to know, would they build this across the street from their house? Would they approve it if it was being built across the street from their house? You know, I think about that every day.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody?
Just one more. Jay Ward, sixteen, out in Point again. I don't want to be confrontational in any way, but I'm going to read from the site plan review regulations. The evaluation of the following appearance factors, page sixteen, the evaluation of the following appearance factors will govern the planning board's decisions on whether the proposed building designs are acceptable. The third one of the, uh, second one of these is harmony and compatibility of project compared to existing site and neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi. My name is Rachel Allkins. I'm at three, picture point. And I want to address the subsidy first because tax credits are a form of subsidy. And so I would say that this is subsidized housing. And it's at sixty percent of the median, and then they will be having thirty percent for housing. And that just meets all the requirements on subsidized housing. So...
I guess it's six of one, half a dozen of the other type of a thing, you know, but it is age-restricted. Again, you know, it is a senior housing development and, and I would expect it to be easy on their budgets if it's senior housing.
Right. Well, all indications are that it is subsidized. And I have worked with subsidized housings for forty years. And it sure sounds like it to me.
They're, they're probably subsidies in there now. Anyone else? Anyone else like to say something? Yes, sir.
Mark Scolera, 33 Lake Street. What can the town do to assess if this will have an impact on property values?
Let's see, that's, but the town itself usually doesn't do that. It's usually, it's usually privately done. If it's, there's a discrepancy there, usually done privately.
Is it something that the town can order and the developer pays for?
It is something the planning board can request, yes.
Okay. I, I think it's, it's worth it. I think it could have quite an impact on property values.
Okay, so, all right. Just one. And we will take that into consideration.
And Jack, right?
Right.
Yeah. Jack, is there anything that you would consider doing to kind of ease the sensitivity of what's going on and the concerns of, of, you know, the people in that general residential area? And I don't mean to ask you specifically, maybe there's someone else who can answer.
Oh, we, just, just address us at the board, address the chairman, and we'll answer questions to the applicant and the engineer and the architect and that type of stuff.
Well, there you go.
And your question is, would they consider doing anything to make it more aesthetically pleasing, basically?
Aesthetically pleasing, more fit in, fit into the surrounding neighborhood, something of that sort.
Yeah.
You know, like we said, think about this building going up in your backyard, what would your feelings be, right? So put yourself in that per, you know, position and try to give us a reasonable answer.
Okay.
We can all walk out here with big smiles on our faces.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Franks, would you like to...
Mr. Chairman, just to speak to the subsidy aspect of this, subsidy is something that's given to a tenant to pay their rent. So in this case, unless a tenant has a voucher, which is a HUD or other agency like through New Hampshire Housing voucher, where their rents are actually paid, every tenant there is expected to pay their own rent, and they have stable incomes. So that's where the 60% AMI comes into play. So somebody has to have a stable income and they'd be able to afford to live there, but not make too much money. So there's an area in between there at 60% AMI, area median income and below. So it's, it's not subsidized. It's a tax credit project where the rents are reduced based on those income bands. So they have to pay their rent, they have to pay their electric, they have to pay their cable, they have to pay their other expenses, just like you would for any other apartment. However, there is a reduction in rent, and we don't, as the owners of the property, get a, a check from the government for that difference. So for example, if there was a two-bedroom unit that was $1,800 per month, but because it's 60% AMI, area median income, we're only allowed to charge $1,300 per month, for example, we don't get a check for that difference of that 500. So the equity investors that come into a town like Swansea, and they bring a substantial amount of investment to the community, and they build a facility like this, the mortgages on these properties are generally lower, and therefore we're allowed to pass those savings directly to the tenants. So those tenants who would otherwise be paying 1,800 are now paying 1,300, and there's a $500 per month savings to that tenant.
I see, so that, that explains it. So your incentive comes from the lower mortgage rates, and, and you don't get, they don't make up the rest of the rent payment to you?
We don't get the difference, no. So we're, we're only allowed to charge certain rents, and so the savings are direct to the tenant, and the tenant therefore can afford to live there, and then that additional rent that they would have been paying at a market rate project is then put back into the community. So that's one of the benefits to it. And I'd like to speak to the appraisal aspect of this, that there was an appraisal done. It was presented to the zoning board, and this was already decided by the zoning board that there are no impact to values on surrounding buildings here at this location, the appraisal's already been done.
Okay, thank, I didn't know that. I didn't see it. Okay, thank you.
We have another.
It should be, it's part of the public record, so we'll take a look at it as well, but...
Yeah, send the zoning package.
You'll be able to see it at Town Hall. And...
Do you have some here?
Um, they can't hear you over the internet, so you better come up.
Mark Scolera, so does that reduction in rent impact taxes being paid to Swansea? I mean, does it reduce?
I don't see how it does. We'll let Mr. Franks answer that question, but I don't see how it does.
Because the, because a property is only allowed to take in certain numbers of rents as far as the monthly income to the property, there is a PA 67 form that can be filed, and it's basically allows for the development project to, to pay taxes, but at a slightly reduced rate based on the premise that the income is less. So for example, the project on Route 10, I think, is slated to pay $110,000 or $120,000 per year annually. I think this project would be somewhere around that, around $100,000. But it's all, it's all done at the state level, and it's, it's not a huge reduction, but because the income for the property is diminished by a certain amount, then the taxes are thereby reduced by that amount accordingly. So it's not, it's not a huge savings, but there is some, somewhat of a savings there. But the income of the property, there's two different approaches, there's two different approaches that are, that are done at the state level, so...
So it's done at the state level, and how is that work? Because these are local taxes we're talking about, right?
Correct.
But the state sets the tax rate for the entire town.
Correct.
Correct? So how does that work, done on the state level? I think you lost me there.
Yeah, so there's a form known as a PA 67 that each, each housing project of this nature submits to the state, and then it runs through the assessor's office. And so it's done through the town, through the assessor's office.
I see.
And so they come up with a, there's a formula. There's two income approaches. There's an income approach, and I'm trying to remember, trying to blank here on the, on the, but it's the higher of the two. So it's, it's not a huge savings, but there is, there is something there.
So does the town actually do the assessment and then send it to the state to get their approval on the assessment of that particular project?
Yes, based on the information provided by the accounting firm that is presenting the information to the state, state housing agency, and I believe it has to report to HUD and the IRS.
And then initially decide on it and then send it back to the town? That's what the tax for that property is going to be?
Correct, but it's done annually.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's pretty, it's heavily regulated, so there's, there's no wiggle room.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I stand corrected.
Just say annually or semi-annually.
Pardon me? Ask your question again?
It's done annually.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a moment.
Rachel Allkins, three Pitcher Point. I was wondering if the planning board had any, were able to request a new traffic studies in view of the fact that we're going to have a 208 apartment complex built like a quarter mile away, as, as well as the 32 unit that is going to be built further down, like about a mile away? And the traffic studies, I don't know how old they are, and so I was wondering if the planning board can request that the developer, you know, do a traffic, have a traffic study?
The planning board, yeah, can always request those things. There was a traffic study done on the 208 one that you were just talking about. I think the one that's, oh, it's going to be up on the hillside over there.
Right.
Yeah. There was a traffic study done on that one, I recall.
It's a definite, different area where this complex is going in. It's a much...
Same road though, 32, you know.
Yeah, much busier area.
Yeah.
But this is, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just speak to that. I mean, this is in 62 and older development, so typically, I mean, so first of all, we're taking access off of a state road, and so it's state jurisdiction. We've received a permit from the state for this project. The state has not required a traffic study in the past for this project because they have thresholds, and we actually talked about this with the John Flatley project, which was the, the 200-plus unit project off of Safra Drive. That project triggered the thresholds because it's a market rate project, so there's traffic during AM and PM peak hour rates onto the road, and the DOT felt that those levels triggered the traffic. This project, being 62 and older, is not going to have the same traffic patterns at 7:00 in the morning and 5, you know, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 PM at night. It's just not. And so DOT ultimately is the entity that normally dictates traffic studies because they're the ones that have jurisdiction over the highway in this, in this location. And so we don't believe a traffic study would be necessary. The use is going to generate very little traffic during the peak hour, you know, peak hour events.
Okay, Mr. Brennan, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah.
Well, I really think it will because I live on Pitcher Point, and right now it's hard to make a left out of there because of the curve right there. And you add, you add another cut with 76 units, and it's going to have an impact, so...
Yes, okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Ryan, 14 Hoden Point. Ryan, Lisa, Ryan. I just had, is there any idea of what the rent is going to be in these places? Do we know what that is, what the, what the rent is going to be?
I'm sure they can answer that question. It's not necessarily a planning board issue what the rent's going to be, but for curiosity, they may be willing to answer your question. They don't have to if they don't want to.
Yeah, I was just curious.
All right, thank you.
I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that question. I'm not privy to that data, and I don't know if Mr. Franks has that calculation done yet. I think it changes because it's based on the, the median income, and that, that gets published, I believe quarterly, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Annually? Okay.
And it's set by, set by HUD.
And set by HUD, so it, it can change.
Right. I just want another thing. You're saying that it's 62 and above, and that you're saying that these people don't drive. I worked in assisted living for 15 years as a nurse in assisted living facilities. All of those people, even the 80-year-old, still with driver's licenses and driving. My mother personally, 70, still driving. All her friends, 70, 75, still driving. So I don't know if it's this particular area and they just happen to be very healthy elderly people, but there's a lot of elderly people driving around here. We see them in our neighborhood. Most of all of my neighbors are 60 and over. They're all here, most of them. So I'm just a little curious as to, I know you did a traffic study, but your traffic study was done all over New Hampshire and not in this specific area, and there is a very large concern for the safety of the people walking on those roads. There are no sidewalks? The town can't do anything really about it because it is a state road? Is there anything that you guys would be doing about maybe sidewalking the road or something for the safety of these people? Because I walk that road quite a bit, and I have been numerously, almost run over hundreds of times, people flying down those roads. What I don't want to see is these people coming across the street to go to the pond or to go anywhere else that they need to go because they can't go anywhere but that way.
So I, I guess I just want to correct the, the record here. I certainly haven't said that none of these people are not going to drive. What we've stated is that we don't believe we need as much parking because there's not going to be two vehicles per unit. With 94 parking spaces, each unit can still have a car, and each, each person living in the unit certainly can still drive, and hopefully they do. But this type of use drives during different times. They're not typically driving during peak hour, peak hour times, and I'm telling you this based on 22-plus years of experience with traffic studies and the fact the Institution of Transportation Engineers publishes frequencies for specific uses, residential uses, market rate uses, elderly housing, and it's a much lower level. And ultimately, traffic that accesses a highway is under the Department of Transportation's authority, and they're the ones that determine whether, typically determine whether a traffic study is needed. And they typically also discourage the construction of any kind of sidewalks within their right of way because they don't want to have the liability of maintaining them. So we are not proposing any off-site sidewalks with this project.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this, this matter?
Jeanette Groom, six Pitcher Point. So I certainly hope that we don't have accidents with people walking along this street, 32, to get to Wilson Pond. You know that if, if there's a pond nearby, people are going to want to go there, and it's very dangerous walking in that street. I only try to walk on 32 during the weekends when the traffic's a little bit less, but it is very busy. It's a very busy road, and you don't know that unless you live there, you know? And I just certainly hope there's no accidents, and then, and then people will pay attention.
So do we?
The other comment I want to make is it seems as though Swansea is becoming the housing capital of the county. And I just, you know, within like one mile, we have all these developments being proposed and approved and built, and it's ridiculous that we have to provide all the housing for the county in this one, this one little town. That's just a comment I wanted to make, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the public would like to speak? Any board members like to speak? All right, so let's move along here, decide what we're going to do. We haven't heard from the Conservation Commission, so that pretty much automatically has us... Go ahead.
They did some of that.
Oh, they did?
Did I not have that to pay?
Oh, I didn't see it in my packet, but...
I brought extra copies of that letter if you want to. Yeah, no problem.
I know their concern was, was about the, the drainage there, but the other items that we're, we're discussing this evening are which, they are which year of the zoning ordinance are we going under here? This is, this needs clarification because we don't want to set a precedent for other projects. So again, to, to sum it up there, the density is under 2020 zoning ordinance, and the parking is under 2022 zoning ordinance. So since this was sent back to the ZBA under the current zoning that it was first submitted under, I don't know whether we ought to be cherry picking back and forth between the two zoning ordinances. So I think we need clarification from our town attorney on that to think about it. Steve, you had a question?
I was just going to suggest that we send a letter to contact the town attorney to get that opinion because that's...
We do, and maybe municipal association, one or the other, or both perhaps, to get an opinion on that.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to that?
Yes, you may.
And maybe ask a question? We actually had the same situation with a project that we did off of Route 12 in town. It was the project that was owned by Ashford Development, and we came back in for a site plan amendment, I believe, with SMC Management. And I do believe that when we came in for the site plan amendment, that we were able to review the project under the current parking calculations because it allowed us to reduce the parking demand and frankly, allowed us to lessen the impervious cover on that project. So I think this town, I think the town may have already done this with an application on Route 12 in a very similar, similar but different fashion, so I just throw that out there for, just for some, some discussion and thought.
Definitely, we'll look into that then, yeah, and so you have the town attorney look into that as well to make sure we haven't set a precedent for ourselves.
I believe what you're referring to, Chad, is the fact that the application and the site plan were presented and acted on. Here, we have a... Here, we have a, or something before the zoning board, but a site plan application was never presented to the board.
Right.
So we can't really go off of 2020 because that is now being presented in 2022.
But we kind of have to go, at least for the density, we have to go off of 2020. If we go for 2022, then that density won't work at all. But it was denied by the ZBA, appealed, and they won the appeal. So they are allowed to go under the zoning regulations that were in effect when they first presented the application, which is 2020. So that's why it's coming in under this density, this higher density here. But the only difference is, is that if they're going under 2020, then should they go under 2020 parking as well? Because with the higher density back in 2020, there was a higher parking requirement as well because of the higher density. Now it's a lower density and it's a lower parking requirement. So that's what we need to, well, we probably can't figure it out, but probably the town attorney can figure it out. I don't know. But we need an opinion on that at least to see, I think. And aside from that, are there any other, oh, I don't know, problems or distractions or whatever from these plans that anyone sees that the applicant could be putting together while we're waiting for an opinion from our attorney? One thing brought up was aesthetics and we'd like them to, if they could, you can't, we can't force them to, but like them to look into the aesthetics of the building to see if they could make it a little more pleasing for the neighborhood, you know, just to look into it. And you were going to say something?
That's basically what I was going to address. Again, going back, it looks like a dormitory and it's not, it does not fit into the neighborhood. I mean, the reference to the airport and the buildings there, it's an airport.
It is, but it's in that same neighborhood. It's, you know, there are big hangars right there by that neighborhood. It's not all full.
They've been there since the 40s.
They have, but it's not all full of, you know, single-family homes. There are single-family homes to the east there, but there's Jehovah's Witness to them.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
No, you can't. Just a second, we're discussing this. But there's Jehovah's Witness to one side and the airport to the backside and then there are the hangars to the other side. So it's a different situation there. You know, I would like to see it more aesthetically pleasing as well. But again, I don't know if we could argue that point with those other buildings already being there and being there prior to this one anyway.
I can ask the attorney that question, too.
Good ask him that, yeah. Yes.
Would it be a request to the town attorney? Can we specifically ask what we are bound by the 2022 height requirements?
Are they different?
I'm not sure. Do you understand?
I don't think so. It's 43 feet they are and it's 45 feet for requirements. I don't think they're different, so I don't think we need it. We can look back in our own zone, we can tell ourselves the answer to that one. We don't need the attorney for that one.
Okay, thank you.
Now, yes, sir, I'm going to answer this. Yes, sir, you had a question? Yeah, I just need your name or I can repeat your question or whatever.
Jackie Mary, 6 Holden Point.
Jackie Mary, Mary, oh, yeah, why?
I'm not going to be able to hear unless he gets, unless we're up at a mic. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Which button? There you go. You keep discussing the airport and the multiple buildings with different types of roofs. You also went back and you talked about the last project that they tried to put a flat roof on and you got them to change it on, if you did or who did. But you got them to change because the neighborhood didn't match the way we're going to build. Somebody said this earlier, and I don't know if it got out, we are in a two-story neighborhood. This is a four-story. What is the difference between what you did and the other project to keep it aesthetic? Why can't you do that with this project? Two stories should be the maximum for this building.
That's a four-story. I think over there are three-story anyways. But anyways, again, coming back to that, we can address it. The planning board could certainly decide something like that and make a decision like that and then bring it up in court and probably lose in court or something like that just because of that aesthetics part of it. Again, with that neighborhood there, it's not a complete total residential neighborhood from what I see. I don't know if the rest of the board is agreeing with me or not. I'm just, this is from where I'm from here. There's, there are industrial-type buildings there. There aren't any four-story buildings there, that's for sure. But there are other different styles of buildings in there, which we kind of have to take into consideration if we're going to force, we'll say, this developer to do one thing when 50 feet away or 100 feet away, if there's another building which is as it is.
I would tell you right now, there's nothing like this on Route 32.
No, there isn't, no.
By, not even close. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you have to come up.
Vicki Sclera, 33 Lake Street. I just want to clarify, you said that the zoning board approved the density, but did they not just approve the use as multifamily, not necessarily the size? Am I confusing something?
Let me just clarify that for you. The zoning board of adjustment approved a special exception that allows, in our zoning, under special exception, it allows multifamily in that business district. The zoning board of adjustment approved that because that's their job to do so.
I get that.
But the density was set out in our zoning regulations at that time as matching this density here. The density requirement was in our zoning. They weren't deciding on their density, they were deciding under the special exception. And it fell within the density requirements at that time, 2020. It does not now, but it did then. Does that explain it to you?
Not exactly, because I just feel like they approved the use as multifamily, period.
Yep, multifamily use there, so that's what they're doing. That was.
So, but that has nothing to do with density yet?
It sort of did, sort of didn't, because the density has to meet the density requirements under the zoning. So if they're allowed, we'll say, 100 units of density there in 2020, then they got 100 units of density there. If it changes, which it did, the town voted to, we'll say, 50 units of density. That's now. But since that was appealed to the courts and the courts, or they won in the court, it has to go under that density that was in effect at the time, which is the higher density.
Okay.
Still, it probably.
It's fine, I just, when it got approved, I just didn't understand it that way, that's all.
Go ahead.
I can add a little clarity to that. When the ZBA does approve a multifamily project, there is a unit number that's typically maybe always associated with that. And so the notice of decision that goes out, the motion that is made by the ZBA will all include the density that's requested by the developer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, ma'am.
So just for the record, Anne Heffernan, Heffernan. The buildings at the airport that are funky, they're down below. They're not sitting right up there on Route 32 amidst all the houses. And I think that's important for you to consider since you keep talking about those buildings being there and being funky, they're down there. So drive by and take a look at that.
I've been by there, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, getting back to the matter of Anne, we're probably going to have to move things along because we have another hearing coming after this. So aside from getting an opinion from our attorney as to which zoning we're going by on this or if all the zoning we're going by, who knows? Any other questions that we want to ask or anything we want the developer to be doing while we're waiting for answers?
Mr. Chairman, I'm losing your volume, just letting you know.
I'm sorry, I was talking away from the mic.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Mike. What were you going to say?
I'm saying that we should get an opinion from the attorney about the aesthetics and hopefully the developer can come back with maybe some suggestions that they would agree to.
Okay, yeah, and if they're willing to do that, then that's fine. They don't have to do it, but if they're willing to do it, that's fine. All right, so I'm going to, unless you have something different? I'm just going to remind you of the impact of the property.
Can't hear.
Okay, he wanted to remind us of the impact to the property values.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like, I would really like, I'd like to know that it is safer than I see it being now for people, these people who aren't going to have that many cars. And what are they going to do? Just sit in their apartment because you can't walk on Route 32. And that's been something I've thought about since I first saw the packet. There's no place for them to recreate in the day, you know, just where can they walk out to? They can walk in halls. There are no sidewalks, there's no place for them to go. So I think we need to consider the safety issue.
Okay.
For these little old people.
We'll consider that.
It has nothing to do with anything except issues that residents raised. I would ask of the applicant and developers to consider, consider taking a floor off and putting some peaks on the buildings instead.
Yep, okay.
Sorry, say that again.
Taking some, take a top floor off and instead put some peaks on the building to satisfy some of the neighbors' concerns.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Franks heard that, I would imagine. Anybody else?
Hi, Sarah.
Yes, Sarah.
The floor plan and elevation that shows the north face of the building are still inconsistent with each other, so I just would like to see the windows on the corridors on the north side of the building to match the windows or lack thereof represented in the floor plan, just on the north side.
Okay, yeah.
I have, I just, I haven't seen those sheets yet, so I.
Part of that hallway is an exterior wall and part of the other side is actually janitor closets and storage.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
You'll have to come up here and address that.
It's just that what is represented on the floor plan doesn't match the elevation. It's showing windows in some places on one part and no windows in the other part, so I just want it to match so that the board knows what they approve when they do approve it.
Part of that hallway is actually exterior wall on the opposite side of that where the stair is. There's janitor closets and storage areas, so there are no windows there.
I understand that, but you're showing windows on one of the drawings and on the other one you're not?
Could you point it out? Could you come over here and point it out? Or if not, then just redo your drawings. Are they on in these? Okay.
Because the north face is an odd.
We can get together with Sarah and make sure they're.
Yeah, just check the drawings again to make sure that the windows are where they're supposed to be. So I think we ought to have a motion to continue this public hearing until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which should be, which should be when is our next meeting, Sarah?
December 8.
December 8. So the motion would be to continue this public hearing until December 8.
I'll second.
Motion by Michael York to continue this public hearing until December 8, seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then we are continued until December 8, right here at Wickham Hall. You're welcome. Okay.
Does that mean you're telling? Are you telling?
No.
No.
I'm listening.
I don't think it would take very long, but thank you, we appreciate it.
Woo doggy.
We could do that to get them out of the way, yeah.
Oh, I won't, I won't. Woo Doggy up here? You're on our discussion phase, but if we just bring them up, all they want to do is move the food truck to one side of the road, to the other pretty much side of the road. Anybody have an objection to that? All right, let's bring that up now then, under discussions and other business. Just press that little button on the microphone there and you go at it. It's pretty straightforward. What you want to do is you want to move your food truck across Route 10 and up probably, I don't know, a quarter of a mile, is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Mike Piermarini Jr. I bought the food truck for my father this past spring. We ran it at its current location.
Just a moment.
Michael Piermarini, P-I-E-R-M-A-R-I-N-I.
Junior.
Yeah, we are.
We should have brought samples, that was a lot needed.
Yeah. So we bought the business off my dad and we ran it this season, everything went really well. The guy that just bought the property off of Bruce Willard, he wants us to leave because he wants the parking for his business. So I approached Scott McPhail about renting that spot. And then I've been since been in contact with Sarah via email and she got me on the agenda for tonight.
So that other building is still there though, right? Where the butt stops here building, isn't that where you're going?
Correct.
Are you going in that building?
No, we're going to use the shed for storage, but we're going to, the food will be served out of our food cart that we currently have.
And whereabouts on that parcel is your food cart going?
It's going to be facing the road.
Yep.
It's not going to be facing, people that have been there in the past have always faced, had their back to the road.
In relations to that building that's there now, where is it going to be?
It's going to be to the left of that, setback just a little bit.
Okay, right, and they're just close to that entrance coming in there then, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody know what we're talking about here? It's on Route 10 there and it is McPhail's, I think it is, McPhail's property there, but it's going.
Where Mr. Bees is there? Yeah, that's where he is.
Oh, there's a drawing of it right there.
There's a drawing.
Okay, yeah, and it's right where he said it was going to be, just at the left of that shed. If you're facing that property, to the left of that shed there. And it's the same food cart, of course, that's sitting there now, right?
Correct.
Just stuck it up there, okay? Did you see the picture of that? That's where it's going. So anybody have any comments on it? Anybody want to make a motion on it?
Off the record, he's right next door to me, I like that location.
Yeah.
Oh, do you live in the apartment same hand?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you won't get a motion out of him, I guess.
Anybody else want to make a motion on that?
I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Okay, motion by Brandon Self to approve moving Woo Doggy's hot dog truck, seconded by Jane Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, good luck to you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for fitting us in.
Yeah, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Mr. Brandon did, Mr. Brandon leave, did they? No, okay. All right, oh, here it comes. Yeah. This is the second time we've seen this one here. Okay, for the next agenda item, and let me just get down to where I am here. The next agenda item is a site plan review and condominium subdivision, and that's Fieldstone Land Construction, PLLC, on behalf of Alot, Alotech, that's what it is, Contractors LLC. They request a site plan review and condominium subdivision for a 32-unit residential condominium development for a property situated off Old Homestead Highway and shown at Tax Map 36, Lot 1-2. Subject property is located in the Business District, and it's a, it's a combination subdivision and site plan review, and it's subdivision because it's a condominium, so that's a form of subdivision, so we're just combining those, we aren't having a separate subdivision hearing in business, it's combined subdivision and this site plan review here. And if we accept the application as complete, we will probably have a public hearing at our next meeting, but let's get through the complete process here first. So, Mr. Brandon, you're up for the completeness of the application.
Sure, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Chairman, with this particular application, time is critical because the ZBA approval expires in February, so my client does need to get started as fast as possible, but in summary, this project was approved by this board, both through condominium and site plan back some time ago, and I don't believe the checklist has changed at all, and we've actually worked through staff comments and stuff, so I don't know if we can state that we submitted the same plan, I mean, we meet all the checklist items, I'd be happy to go down through it if that's necessary, but I didn't know if it changes anything that this has already been reviewed for completeness once, and we've really just made some minor modifications to address some staff comments.
It is the same plan, yeah, I recognize it from before. Not all the members, I don't think were on this board at that time. No, so. How about the modification, unless, unless you want them to go run through the full list of requirements of our site plan on there? You mentioned some modifications to it, which are different from the original site plan.
Yeah, we made, we just made some improvements.
Is that, I mean, is that part of your presentation, or are you talking about the completeness of the application? Do we have to vote on that first?
It was just the complete, I mean, the completeness part, we satisfied the checklist all once before, we submitted, so when we, when we submitted this package, we submitted the project exactly that was approved back in, I think it was 2020. And that project was our, had already gone through an acceptance, we've made minor modifications. I would be happy just to cruise down through the checklist if that makes it easier, I was just trying to get as much done this evening if possible.
Yep, I understand. Does, does anyone have any objections to the completeness of the application? I think we've all looked it over. But I know we've seen it all, Richard, do you have any questions on it? Because he'll run down the checklist if you like. And, and as far as I can see, everything is there, and as far as staff can see, everything is there and is complete. So then, if, if that's a consensus, then we need a motion that the application is complete and ready to go to public.
Make a motion, the application is complete.
Okay, a motion by Richard Lane that the application is complete and ready to go to public hearing, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, then I will open the public hearing.
Perfect.
Pardon me? 8:54, okay, thank you. Public hearing is over.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. We are before you this evening seeking a reapproval of the site plan approval for a 32-unit multifamily condominium subdivision over Tax Map Parcel 36-1-2. Subject site consists of approximately two acres of land, has 190 feet of frontage along Old Homestead Highway, situated on the west side of Old Homestead Highway, approximately a half a mile from the intersection of south of Safford Drive. The property is located in the Business District and currently does have a special exception valid through February 13th of 2023 for a multifamily residential project to be constructed at this location. Currently, the project or property is vacant and wooded, and the topography on this site, similar to the other project, slopes away from Old Homestead Highway down towards the airport to the west. The property is bounded by the airport to the west, single-family residential properties to the north and east, and the proposed town fire station property to the south. This condominium development would include 32 units of market rate housing, the units would be broken up between four standalone buildings. As depicted on the site plans, these buildings would be orientated generally along the northern and southern property lines, and they would face inwards towards the parking area. Buildings have been designed to be two stories in height. The two buildings closest to Old Homestead Highway have a footprint of 5,232 square feet, and then the two buildings internally into the rear of the site have footprints of 4,164 square feet. The property will be accessed by a 22-foot-wide access drive down the center, and will have 72 parking spaces provided within the site internally, which does exceed the town requirements. The access point at the highway does have a DOT permit, which was provided with the application, and the access terminates in a tomahawk-style turnaround at the end. This was one of the only changes that we made to this project from the prior one, is the fire department asked for us to enlarge the length of the turnaround where the dumpster terminates at the end, so we did that and addressed their concerns. Other site improvements for this project include the construction of walkways along the front, oop, along the front of the buildings, as well as drainage improvements, site lighting, landscaping, and utility connections. So just taking a quick look at the grading plan for this project, pretty simple design. Basically, what we're doing is just collecting all of the stormwater runoff down through the center and outletting it into an infiltration basin along the western boundary of the property, same design that was previously approved, so it's a combination of closed drainage and open drainage to, to capture and mitigate those, those treatments. The lighting is provided by building-mounted lights, and that's shown on the lighting plan here, and that is all designed to be compliant, and again, everything here has been reviewed and approved in the past. The only other changes we made from this project, from the approved, the previously approved version, was we made some modifications to the utility connections to address some comments from the sewer commission. That consisted primarily of. Primarily of doing a straight-line connection from this building to the sewer manhole, which is located here.
And also connecting into the manhole out on Route 32.
Yeah, that connection was already there, but we had a, the old design had a jog in the alignment, and the sewer commissioners wanted another manhole installed there, and so what we did is just shifted the, the connection so that we didn't need the jog and went straight into the, into the sewer manhole.
So you have a pump station there too?
Correct.
In the building there, pump station for that, and leading up to that manhole almost to 32, then there's some gravity from that manhole from, on, manhole just back from 32 onto 32.
Yeah, and that's all as designed previously, so we have this building here, the building, the building on the southeast corner runs gravity to the manhole and then gravity to the road. This building here, this back building, runs gravity to a pump chamber, this one runs gravity to a pump chamber, it gets pumped up to that manhole and then runs gravity to the, to the road.
And those were basically the only changes then, right? Yeah, the utilities hook up and the hammerhead in the back there.
That's it.
Yeah. So, any questions from the board? No, no, I know it's, it's like, should we, the thing is, we've seen this drawing, we've seen this whole site plan before, if nobody has any real objections to it or questions or whatever, we could finish at time or we could continue to another meeting.
Just a quick question, Chad, the snow storage to the, to the east side of the complex, what is the grade going after 32? You don't need to go.
Yeah, it, so the grade is, 32 is higher, so the snow storage here would ultimately melt back onto the pavement.
It's gonna be a pitch upward.
It goes up to the highway.
Any other questions from anybody? We don't have too many members of the public, I don't know if anybody's on Zoom. Uh, nobody's on Zoom, okay. Well, we do, it's your pleasure, continue to another meeting or approve it or disapprove?
Architecturally, it's like it belongs.
Yeah. It fits there.
True story, yeah.
Yeah, it does fit there, and we've all rather been by that, and places right by where they're gonna build a fire station, now you can see it, they, or they had a machine in there a while ago, I don't know, but you see where it's gonna go right there. It looks like there's gonna be plenty of vegetative to buffer between this and the residential use on the other side, so they're gonna leave a bunch there. Not much on this side, a lot of skinny trees on this side, but there's nothing there, just that they've been locked now. Okay, has anyone else about it?
Some of the members that have seen this before, have any more questions? I think we've all finished tonight.
Yeah, anybody else have any questions? If not, then I'll close the public hearing, and we can have a vote on it. Anybody have objections to that?
We'll just add a few more on it tonight, I do have the list of the conditions from the prior approvals, for those to be included in the purple, blue, red, it's another.
We are the typical conditions, and these conditions were from the last time, the freestanding sign at the entrance shall require a town sign permit, that's typical, lighting shall be installed and arranged so as not to cause damage to uncutting properties or on a dish called a grower, that's part of our site plan regs anyway, they don't even need to put it in there, but we seem to put it in there in all of these. Landscape buffer along northern property line shall be maintained, and that's what I was just talking about, that's what I'm there. And a copy of the registration of the condominiums, and we need to have that, the Hampshire Attorney General's office shall be provided, and a copy of the condominium association documents shall be provided to the town. Those were conditions from the last time, and I would say they would be the same to this time. All applies to this. Anybody?
So with those conditions, are you?
No, wait, I am closing the public hearing. If nobody objects, then I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. So, yes, Michael York, we're going to say.
I'll make the move that we approve the project.
With those conditions. Conditions I read off, okay. Is, Michael York makes a motion to approve the project with the conditions that I just stated, is there any, I mean, is there a second?
That's one question before a second.
Go to, go to the second, then we, then we can ask a question. We just need a second.
A second.
Okay, seconded by Richard Lane, okay, now discussions.
The DOT that approved the driveway entrance?
Yes.
That.
Flyer too, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Then, no other discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I guess we're done with that.
Thank you very much for.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too. Hey, I think we're done, we did the Woo Doggy, we had zoning ordinance amendments, we aren't gonna do that, my rules of procedure, we don't need to do that, site plan review regulations, we don't need to do that, and any other businesses?
We have one thing we have to do.
Other business?
The second meeting in December is scheduled for December 22nd. I am requesting that the board consider moving that meeting back one week to December 15th, so that the two meetings in December will be December 8th and December 14th, since we've completed the public hearing scheduled for zoning amendments.
Are they hitting the 15th, you said?
Yes. And that would be instead of the 22nd.
Make a motion that we do that.
Okay, motion by Richard Lane that we, we move our last meeting in December up to the 15th, so we would have a meeting on December 8th and December 15th. Is there a second? Seconded by Jane Johnson, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we've done that.
One other, one other thing just to bring you up to speed on where we are, there's a line field fencing, etc., that's supposed to be included in a review at the field, but also there's a conflict in interpretation of government use.
We're concerned about that.
Our attorney is of the opinion that it is not government use.
It is not?
That it is not. The state, and reading the letter, says that it is, but I think the individual, this is my opinion, this read section 2B, 2A, because it says any use. That it is not a government-funded, basically not a government-funded agency.
The way I read the RSA, I would agree with our attorney that, yes, it is not a government use, not a town use, something like that, but what did the state have to do with it? Did we ask them for an opinion?
Someone, I think, Michael.
Oh, Mike Brown, I asked him for an opinion?
Yes, I asked him. But it was curious, because our attorney gave us the opinion, it was in August, and the, and then Michael sometime afterwards submitted a request from the state, so somewhere along the line, someone objected to what?
He, he probably didn't like the planning board deciding that it was a non-governmental use and then we're gonna do a site plan on it, probably not. We'll see where that goes, I don't know, we have to just keep us updated on that.
That's, you know, that's the way I would.
On a, on a piece of property owned by the government or the town or something.
What, what they're saying, what the state is saying is that we can only be in advisory position.
Yeah, and that's, that's not correct, and you can go back, or you read it, anyway, that's what they're saying, it does not look like that, but again, depending on the interpretation.
Is that from the state attorney general?
No, we are not general, it's, it's not.
It's from the attorney.
Okay, and they have to go association.
Oh, okay, so then. They had a bunch of attorneys on there.
Well, they had a bunch of attorneys on there? But municipal services, not until.
Anyway, someone will have to object to it, you're gonna need them to investigate.
You can start writing a book, they haven't adjourned the meeting yet, so I don't know.
We're going to a second, okay. Motion for adjournment is in order, no, do we have anything else, right?
I don't want to be adjourned.
Motion for adjournment by Jake, seconded by Brandon, all those in favor, I would take a second, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we're adjourned, okay.
Get rapper, please.